...
And I told you this last, I told the board, this boardroom last time, how much times before? We're not a camera board. Every other week, each month, we get another application. Oh, we made a mistake, so we want to grant it. Oh, we made a mistake, we want to grant it. It's a defect, it's an extra, it's a garbage, it's a stare. You know, and I think it's getting a little bit out of hand and out of control. Oh, whoops, we made a mistake. I want to know if this is going to grant it, what are we going to do, and I tell the board members, to stop that from keeping on happening. Because it may just look like a joke over here. We're going to say we want it on the roof. We're going to say we want it in the back and out of the side. And then, and then, we'll just put it on the side, we'll say we made a mistake.
To my understanding, it really was, it really wasn't a mistake, but I will say, where it's located, I don't know if anybody else went to take a look at it, but I'm.
I did.
I really went up there. They are literally between the building and the ramp, and you can't see them. I had to actually look to find them.
I was there, I saw exactly it.
Right.
And one of those units needs to be serviced, because there's no roof to get in.
I was thinking the same.
You know, so how can, how can this board and the front office say, you know, it's a mistake, you can't serve the technician anyway, so it's a break, somebody does nothing else.
But that's, they're going to have to figure out a way to service it. The applicant, that's the applicant's problem.
I mean, it's the applicant's problem or the tenant's problem, whatever it's looking at.
Well, it's the applicant's owner, it's all right.
It's going to become, it's going to come from, and I'll tell you, I'm going to turn it over to my fellow board members, let it become King Solomon, figure out how to cut the baby off, I don't know. You know, guys, what do you guys want to do?
I have this question just from previously.
Trying to get a.
You know, I look at something like this, if it's clear, do you walk away from it?
It's a ramp.
It's not under the ramp, it's like between the ramp and the building.
So what's important here, because is that that issue? I don't remember what we discussed, but that's kind of what I'm saying, but, you know, Jerry, I mean, what, he had faced this, and then we do this, or back up to the top of the issue, but this is anyway, does it come and say that the builder didn't look at the plans? That's asking the insider. Is there a way to define that, something to say, you know, we can let it go, but in lieu of the monitor? So we should let people know that this can't do this all?
Yeah, there is one in back, there is one in back. I noticed that there's.
There's three inside.
No, I think there's two on the side and one in back. Two on the side, one in back, the other one looks like it was generated or something. Didn't look out of hand, which you have.
This is a one-story building, light and wood base.
You're right.
It's sold.
Very hard. I think the applicant is trying why they can't put the notice in the back of the building, where they can serve it properly, if not on the roof. Right now, there is at least one air conditioning unit.
Is one specific, that assassin's plot supporting the unit through there?
I don't know what it is. And I don't think, I don't think anyone's here from the builder to tell me how much that is. I imagine it's going to be costly, but from what I was told, it was an innocent mistake. I mean, the builder, I don't know if he was shown on the plans, I don't know how it happened. Obviously, he didn't read the resolution, because it's clearly in the resolution.
I was married, I don't have.
In those respects, why is it not, I mean, it's a parent all over the place? Why is the applicant trying to testify that it's a mistake?
You know, this is, that's one issue, whether it's just happening every other, there's another, whoops, it's a mistake, and that's ridiculous, just taking after all.
Why are these people not going to see out now? Is it something that they're not for the hearing?
They've been in there for a while, so it's strange.
Yeah, they've been there.
For a long time.
I didn't do that then.
Fran, my girl, Fran, do you know why it was picked up now? I don't know, it just got picked up about a month ago. I don't know, I didn't say much, I don't know why it wasn't picked up before, maybe that tempers, you know? I don't know.
Can only presume that this is the production that has a temporary, it's not permanent, it's based on the rest.
That was my first question.
The tenant must have taken up and said.
And he did, right.
No, but they only, he must have only picked it up about a month ago, because I only found out about it about.
Yes, I have a suggestion, I think, even though it seems like it's not an issue, and it's not, it's not being a problem the way I'm looking at it, I think we shouldn't go around it, we should let it go until next month. Let the applicant come and tell us what he thinks.
It's not, it's not, I agree, it's not an issue per se, where it is, it's just an issue that they always come back and they, do what they want, and then we have to grant them a, 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 that's.
I understand, I understand, but at this.
That is my problem.
That's fine, but at this point, it's fine, I mean, it's not fine, you know, but at this point, that makes sense to the building. But we don't know what, what else is, what is happening, why they didn't. I would just like to have clarification on what it is, and that, the fact that they have to come back, that is, tell this, when they call it a punishment, they call it whatever it is, how many, explain what it is.
I mean, they're going to expect, I know, they're going to tell you, they're going to tell you that it was a mistake. The builder made, the evidence, the ATC guy made a mistake, and what?
So the fact that they have to come back, and they don't understand, they're not going to make a future mistake.
This is a complaint, you know what, or the builder, has he monitored?
Says he was trying.
Driving the technical disaster.
No, that's the other, it's all right.
It's like, it's like.
I don't, I don't know, I don't make a sign.
When I suggest if we get him back next month, if they're going to back. But you have to be ready to testify, what the cost is going to be, ignition, either on the roof or in the back of the vehicle, find out what the heart is.
And also, that's why, how that affects, that everyone will service.
Sure.
Certainly, of course, this is what we're going to do. We need to, everything's out, we need to.
Maybe you are trying to lie on what's wrong with it.
Talking on the surface, that's what.
Yeah, but like I said, that's, that's going to be the applicant's problem now.
Yeah, but what's going to happen is, how is it going to be serviced, they have all the certain deputies out, all the certain deputies out, because they have to service.
Revenue.
Revenue.
What? Did you, did anyone see, did you see, did anyone see?
What?
What, I'm listening, uh, did you, did you see something? You saw, so you saw where it happened?
Hey, you see, this is very obvious.
No, what?
This is where the building is set up, very high building, and it's not, originally, they wanted more, a few story buildings. And we feel, maybe we ought to have a nice, impressive building, but they didn't help, right, and they didn't put those high buildings, their only one store, was a very, very nice building, as it may not be accessible to the room. So maybe that's.
Flashes, one, two times, I'm going to say, I don't want you for the flash. Mr. Chairman, yes, who is he? Yes, how?
We're having a great deal of discussion, so it's back to what you started, first point, and this, this is what you're supposed to do, it really isn't up to what is solid. I personally think that if we continue doing this, we're going to continue to have to correct the mistakes. So my opinion is, there is.
Okay. I, I'm having here a fellow board member that I recommend that we should get a lot more detail before we, before we, the other, so next month. You know?
And then, just, I just want to point out, it's really in the location that it's not creating any further barriers.
This is why, I went to see it also.
Right.
It is in a very tight spot.
It's in a tight spot, yes.
Yes, it's not creating a barrier issue.
It's not creating a, it screams, it screams, no, you can see it from where, I had to look, it took me a long time looking from there.
Yes, I went there, the first reaction when I saw it was, it's a mistake, it's a mistake to do. But now, when you think about it, it's difficult to repair, it's between a very tight spot between the ramp and the building, and it's the wrong place, and, and they were all supposed to be on the roof. I think we should come back and let us know how much it costs to put on the roof, was it in the tail, and then we'll make an adequate decision. Also, you should testify how this thing happened. Say it, look at the plans, it's ridiculous.
And what did Jerry, did you verify that price of Jerry? If he delivers a price of twenty thousand dollars, okay, so, how do you know what the, the cost is?
The chairman's decision got out, he should have probably confirmed. The stores we have from the.
Right.
A little more.
I would very much like to approve, it's a silly mistake, but it's difficult to approve, given the proof in the states, and this could be a big problem, and I'm uncomfortable, so.
I, I didn't, I didn't before here, it's just a second part of these mistakes coming in, and I would send a message out that, that, that these mistakes cannot, and will not happen again, or further. Okay? So I guess we're going to have a motion to carry this to next month, for further discussion. I think so, yes. Jerry, we need some sort of motion, yeah?
Yeah, you want to carry this to the part five, to that complaint?
For further discussion. Go ahead. Okay, I have that motion from, from Shinkman, and the second, second computer at the end. Can I have my secondary roll call, please?
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
No. He said no.
Langley's not here?
Langley came over, no, he's not here.
Mr. Abdali?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Pitten?
Greenberg?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gwolff?
Mr. Moon?
Mr. Gwolff came over.
How about me? Mr. Hollister?
You're not on my list.
Uh-huh? You're not on your list? I can go home?
Wait a minute, Obie, is he in here?
Obie, Obie came over in his event hat, and Mr.. Yes, come in, come in the house.
Mr. Halbistan?
Yes, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have one other application, it's a really, really short one, application four zero seven four, for some system management, is there any way we could just?
I have one more correspondent that I have to carry. If the police officers would like to sit in one of their back seats, we'll pick you up, we'll pick, we'll pick that up after finishing that other correspondent, okay? Madam Secretary, we have one more correspondent, get ahead.
Appeal number thirty-eight eighty-six. They're writing, they forgot to file the subdivision map, they're requesting a hundred and eighty days to get final, finalize residential compliance and install the monuments.
Um, what is this for?
Thirty-eight eighty-six?
Thirty-eight eighty-six, is anyone here? Is anyone here, thirty-eight eighty-six?
I'm here, I have a lift.
Yeah, I see this.
Yes, uh, it was a, uh, you firm? You firm, no, Brian, Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, Professor, and here, Professor Wetter, if this applicant can be planned and fully paid, they need to run away and do lots, and when things need to get done, the township was slowly getting their things done, so that would violate, it doesn't, for extension of the eighty days.
Okay, before we do this, I'd like to ask everyone in the auditorium to please refrain from talking here in the auditorium. It really echoes back here, and you can't even hear ourselves think. If you have to say something to your fellow colleague, please do so outside, please do not speak in the, in the auditorium, thank you.
Mr. Plante, has the zoning changed for this property?
No.
And, 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 Brian, Jerry, this was, I believe, was done in two thousand and fourteen?
It says, yeah.
And it expired when? When was it expired?
It expired, it was a permit expense act, it expired.
Which is by a year ago?
Five years ago.
Okay, can we grant that extension for that momentary time?
Uh, you can grant, yes, you can grant extensions retroactively, when it would have expired.
Okay.
Which would have been December first of sixteen, that means allowed to have three extensions, so, yes, you can extend this till the end of eighteen.
Till the end of eighteen?
End of eighteen.
Right, but then at the end of eighteen, come back again for another one?
No, it's eighteen, that's old.
It's done, okay.
I'm sorry?
It expired September sixteenth.
December first of sixteen. December first of sixteen.
It's a three extension of six, one hundred and eighty-six months.
No, it is, the land use law lets you free one year extension. Free one year extension.
One year, so, so that's why it expires at the end of eighteen, because that's when it's free one year, retroactively from sixteen and back.
And the zoning hasn't changed, so no more of that.
Right, okay, so then, that'll be, I don't see an issue with that. Anyone have any, can I have a first time, if that is a little bit of a mess? Go ahead.
That's done, his paperwork is done, and they, paperwork is done, and everybody, everybody stands here, and you can now. Right.
I can't hear you, I'm in that chamber.
It's granted, it's, it's still in the papers.
Okay, so you realize that by the end of eighteen, it's over and done?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
It's gonna be the motion to extend it for the additional year, December first of eighteen.
Okay, can I have a motion, as you just heard from Jerry? Madam, madam, new motion from Mr. Abdali, Madam Secretary?
This is for extending to December twenty-eighteen?
I couldn't hear you.
December first, two thousand and eighteen. December first, two thousand and eighteen.
December first of eighteen.
Of eighteen is when it expires.
Mr. Gilli?
Seven months.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Abdali?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Halbistan?
Yes.
Is Mr. Gonzalez here?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, no, the secretary.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilli, yes, okay, thank you. Um, just, just for the record, I see that Much Like Me is not here, and Obie Gonzalez showed up, so Obie Gonzalez will be sitting here, Much Like Me's out, and Mr. Enger still remains seated in the loop, Much Like Me. Okay. Are we done with the correspondence for tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go into appeal number, new business, appeal number.
Is that four?
Forty, oh.
I was saying, you can.
What is it? Um, can I, you had a quick, one quick question we've had before on new business?
Yeah, you can do it. Appeal number four zero seven four, Ron, this, this one we really can do in really a few minutes, I don't want to say, I won't give the exact number, I don't know what it's called, but.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, okay. Okay, just, just for the record, four, four zero six two? You want to tell the record what's going on?
We don't have any information, I think.
You get that, you know, get that, okay, go ahead, we'll get that, I'm in. Okay, so you want to, you want me to take four zero six two? I'm sorry, you want me to take?
Four zero seven four.
This is, this is one I saw as well, this is one is for an extension of a, of a, of a parking lot?
Yep.
Okay, does anyone have any issues by taking them out of line? Just for, an extension of a parking lot? Guys, does anyone have any issues, take them out of line? What? Anyone have any issues, Judah?
No.
No, how about Abdali? You okay with taking them out of line? Okay, okay, what we'll do?
Two minutes left.
Okay, in five minutes, I have to move you away from the podium, I'll move the application off the podium, and you'll have to wait until the attorney continues.
Five minutes left.
Five minutes left, go ahead, I'll make you that go.
You want to get prepared or is he here in the meeting?
What?
We're here in the meeting.
Let me summarize the matter quickly.
Yes, please.
So the line of subdivision hasn't been needed, this is also a huge variance in the recent being, is that by adding the property in the post parking lot, that is, to be existing non-extension use, or.
How many, hence why the, um.
Because you're increasing the size and you're adding.
I'm adding piece of size ability, I'm increasing size a lot, but.
It's correct, you're, you're adding to the use for a month.
Correct.
You're increasing that potential activity by increasing the quantity of the other amendments. It's not scientific, or there's no initial bill.
So in essence, I'm making it easier for the papers of those stores on that area, that have a parking lot.
That is correct.
Okay.
That means the doors benefit.
Okay, got it, thank you, okay.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, I got to talk quickly here, in a nutshell, what's going?
One second, one second. As I said previously, please, you have to say something, please do so outside, thank you.
What, what's going on here is that the applicant currently has four lots, one of them has a shopping center on it, you're probably familiar with the Culture Village supermarket, is in that shopping center. There are three other lots, what the applicant wants to do is consolidate those four lots into two new lots. One lot will have the shopping center, and we are enlarging the exist, we're enlarging the parking area to make more parking spaces for that same shopping center. There is no new construction here, the only thing we're doing is adding parking, taking away property from what's currently the single-family house, adding parking, adding underground recharge basin, so we're improving the drainage, and we're adding a parking lot, and that's it. So like I said, I don't think it gets much simpler than this, and you wish you heard applications like this every night.
Are we losing any parking spaces for the single-family house, which is probably four?
First of all, let's, let me just have, let's have Glenn's one.
Who are referring to the shelters? It is, how many parking spaces will be needed to the house? The house has at least four, and one car garage, there's probably room for three or four cars in the driveway. We're not, we're not touching the driveway on the existing single-family house.
Okay.
Parking, they have, they will.
And we're not creating a barrier, so the side got setback by moving the lot line over? What's the remainder between the house and the new lot line?
Fourteen feet.
Oh, funny, okay.
Obie's in the room.
No brain, okay? Okay, um.
I guess, I guess for the record, we should let him say the positive and negative criteria.
Positive criteria, positive criteria is ran forty-eight parking spaces in the shopping center, which has parking problems.
Thank you.
As far as negative criteria, I don't believe there is any negative criteria in the section.
Okay, good. Anyone in the public want to be heard on appeal number forty-seven four subset management? Seeing none, we'll call to the public, can I have a motion, or are anybody commenting approved? Motion from Mayor Gilli to approve this application. Can I have a second? Second from Machine Gun. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Abdali?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Ingberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halbistan?
Okay, yes, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
While we're on, I'll make sure that you got a couple of first applications, I'm going to slip down to one more, real quick, application probably faster than this one, which is forty-seven seven, LE Allbound, forty-five Clearstream. It's for, for cooling and conservation easement. Anyone here?
Yes.
Go ahead, quick.
Uh, Mr. Allbound wants to put a pool in his yard, uh, I have, uh, Matt, uh, so it's a pool, this is an application similar to what you heard, uh, next month, uh, where there was a decent head, was in the yard, uh, on Charlie, by the applicant at the time, uh, Mr. Allbound had this spot, you can see under the lettering, where there's no tree, he just picked a pool in there, uh, he needs to modify his line, he works with that, essentially, we did last month.
Not any tree, yes?
Correct, correct.
And is, we're not creating any, sorry, go ahead.
Not creating any variances, uh, we notify all the neighbors, uh.
And where's the previous applicant, he just needed a cool house, he needs to create a pool.
Yes, yes. Cool ladder for Matt, and, and show him.
Chairman, is there a ballpark for the side or the other side?
It's ten and a half, ten and a half?
Ten, ten and a half. Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes, because it has to be fifteen, right?
Yes.
Okay. I have an interesting quick question, we're not creating any additional runoffs into the other neighbor's property by, by putting in a pool?
No, artificially, I should indicate that around the, the deck of the pool, the amount of putting in the fence, the privacy fence for both themselves and neighbors, and the neighborhood landscape, I think, is very. Anybody familiar with that, make sure they know.
I, I, I understand, so we're not creating any, any, any runoff? I think the numbers here are going from fifty-six, fifty-five by the pool area, there to, to fifty-three by the cabana, so you have like a three-quarter drop.
Right, and, and the water currently runs and, and runs off in natural directions, and, and it'll be amended to stay, because we're putting the pool in that area, and that's all, uh, when it comes off the pool deck, it's going to run any water that lands in the pool, to stay there.
Right.
The evaporate, the water that lands on the deck, it's going to run onto the ground.
Which is right, okay. Can, can we slip that, that over just a little bit, so we can create, and remove that variance?
Yes.
Or, or if anyone, if a guy don't mind, the variance should be there, whatever you got. Yes, yes. Great, yes. This is, this is pretty, this is not a, this is a. Any welcome, Captain? It's, it's. What about this neighbor? I, I, I don't have a issue, guys, do whatever you want, whatever you think is reasonable, okay? Uh, any comments, call numbers? I would open to the public, anyone from the public want to be heard, four zero seven seven, LE Allbound? Seeing none, we'll call to the public, guys can have a motion? Motion. Whichever which way? Make, make a motion to approve. I think it is, and the plan, okay, I have a motion from, from, one second, um, Judy Rivian, second by Mayor Gilli. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Abdali?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Ingberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halbistan?
Yes, good night, and good luck. Okay, um, okay. Moving back into the, our regular agenda. We're going to start with appeal number four zero six two, which I believe is going to be carried.
Yes, we have, we call to create the measure of action, the, the, the.
Go ahead, hey.
Yes, what happened to the hearing, this is a case of first impression, both the enjoying landowner and the applicant are my clients, and I found that app, I was confident, in fact, Mr. Pryor, gentleman enough to remind me of the fact that they're representative. So this afternoon, he asked for some more time, and he's hearing the audience, saying what they hear in the public, he asked for a feature, and he didn't know there was other cases before that. I would respect he carries one month, and if we can't work out, it'll have to be another term, because I can't represent either party, since the vote party is my client.
And what was, and what was the reason why you postponed it last month?
Because we found out about it, and we tried to work it out, certain information is not available, and we just provided this empty. So unfortunately, it takes a bit more time to get things done.
I hear.
And all the neighbors are prized, and everyone knows about it, and this is the crisis here.
Let, let, let me first say this to the public, is there anyone here on appeal number, um, four, four zero six two from the public, besides Mr. Pryor, if he's here? So no one came out specially here at this meeting?
No.
Okay, so, so that, 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 that's good. If people had come out to hear this meeting, I don't think it would be here to postpone and keep on postponing. Okay, so, guys, if you want to grant him a postponement for another month? Micro cone, not revealing who your clients are. It's like a micro cone, not revealing who your clients are.
Unfortunately, it was, it was a corporation, when I stepped out, you know, this is, and I didn't figure it out, it was companies.
Okay.
He just signed up to, he told me, he said, listen, I would argue to be objected, I said, true, object against this.
Okay, I, I would see anyone from the public that came out specially here, but Jack Porter approved this application, and I saw, I probably don't have an issue there, letting you hear another time, but we are usually very, don't like to postpone meetings the night of the hearing, that any events notice. But since I don't see anyone here, and Eddie, you weren't here in a long time, in front of this board, so you probably forgot how we operate. What? Okay, can I have a motion to carry this without further notice, I'm going to waiver a fight? I have a, I have a motion from Abdali, can I have a second? Second from Machine Gun, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
The meeting is July eleventh.
July?
June eleventh.
June eleventh?
June eleventh.
Okay.
Six eleven.
Six eleven.
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Abdali?
Yes.
Mr. Vivian?
Yes.
Mr. Ingberg?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Inver?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes, okay, I hope you work out your differences. If, if, if anyone that's here in the public for appeal number four zero six two, you heard it's Krieger, it'll be heard on June eleventh, here in this courtroom.
Mr. Pryor just left, just for the record, he just walked out. He told me he heard you.
Okay, you can do it. Okay, okay, um, we'll move on to the next one on, 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 on new business, four zero six three, I'm Victor Zimba.
Leading Street Block...
Say you look. Okay.
Block seven sixty-nine, lot nineteen point fourteen, R seven five zone, we're dealing with the duplex, lot width required sixty feet, proposal fifty-four. I'm Terry Boat engineer planner, February twentieth, twenty eighteen. The applicant seeks minor subdivision approval to subdivide an existing ten thousand one hundred thirty-nine square foot lot property into two residential lots. The property was previously approved under planning board for zero lot lines proposed for future development with duplex building, requesting variance relief for minimum lot width. We combined lots nineteen point twenty-two and nineteen point twenty-three, proposed a lot width of fifty-four feet or sixty-two feet wide.
Evening, Chairman and fellow members of the board, we're having a matter of hearing on the wettest avenue. The applicant will be here at the lot, in the R seven five zone. The only variance that the applicant is seeking, which is why we're here, is that we get a width of sixty, that we're only looking for. The, otherwise, all the setbacks are met, coming in with fifty-four, we need setbacks. There is no other variance that we're looking for. The act, the board should be aware that the applicant's purchased property for a single-family home and tried to sell it, and we couldn't sell it. The testimony tonight that we're here is that this area is predominantly, not all of it, is duplex, and it sits out, like we say in people, a US building, which means like a, an operation, and that's what our testimony is tonight. Now, friends, we do, I like the spirit, I'm a user or firm, I'm an old person, I'll be up.
I do, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I've marked three exhibits. He wanted a color rendering of the, uh, proposed minor subdivision. Page two is a, uh, tax, copy of the tax map, the subject property is colored in an orange, uh, it's in blue, uh, uh, on the map, I've indicated a big campus in this area that has been constructed recently. And as you can see from page two, uh, there's been a lot of duplex developments in this neighborhood, and the picture of the lots that we're, we're building, uh, twenty out of the twenty-five lots, in the lot are duplex. Uh, page three is a, uh, aerial from the map showing where the property is, and as Brandon indicating, it was a subdivision application, so the planning board, the planning board granted, uh, the duplexes and the other loans, uh, and this lot was supposed to be a single-family lot, and as indicated, they've been unsuccessful, uh, in finding a purchaser for a single-family lot, uh, whereas it's able for the new construction of the duplex. Uh, I, I should point out that the orders that they need sixty feet for a, a newly created lot, uh, fifty feet, uh, is okay for an existing lot. Uh, and, and as you read here, this is an existing lot, but it was created by the planning board, so I'm, I'm not going to argue with Terry, because I wouldn't want to argue in any way that we're at the wrong board. My argument is that we're at the correct board, but that this makes sense for this lot. Fifty-four feet, whereas a newly created lot would be sixty, but it is over ten thousand four feet, so when we look at that, it's going to be proper, when we look at does it fit in the neighborhood proper, uh, you can see that the majority of the duplexes are on the properties to the north, which is the area that we're developing, as opposed to the area to the south, which was developed, uh, with, uh, single-family homes, uh, when, when there were a couple of large tractors that were developing the case. Uh, looking at the report, uh, it, it indicates, uh, on page one, that it's a ten thousand one hundred thirty-nine square foot lot, so we're not asking for just a little bit under ten thousand, like, like a lot of the applications that we see, we're asking for ten thousand, we're looking asking for a little bit less than, uh, sixty, uh, at fifty-four. Uh, and as the report indicated, that's, that's the only legal agreement, but it agrees with the condition by statute that it's a, uh, not meeting a condition of conditional use, therefore we need to use variance in order to grant it. Uh, looking to the justification, uh, to the board to grant the variance, at the, the two thousand and seventeen master plan on page two, under back, the background information goes into the, the population growth that's been experienced, uh, page three goes on to say that in two thousand and fifteen, there were totals of four thousand four hundred sixteen more births. We all know there's more births than that this year, and it concludes that based on this information, it's therefore important that label the last residential government and house to accommodate the population, and this would accomplish that goal. Uh, the vision statement on page seventeen of the same master plan, uh, says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning. And redevelopment of this property, uh, by the planning board was based on smart growth planning protocol, they, they allowed, you can see the construction from Google Earth, the construction started a few years ago, uh, and the property that is developing, and the single family, uh, did not develop. Uh, the, uh, municipal land use law, the AC forty-five fifty-five D two, uh, under the purpose of the Act, it says, the purpose of the Act, when appropriate use of development, the land is stated in a manner of equal political state and moral and general welfare, and my testimony that this bill promotes general welfare, as Senator Wilson, the housing opportunities indicated, uh, are needed in the master plan. Uh, E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentration or community well-being, first in neighborhood community reasons and preservation of the environment. And my testimony that does this, if we're not exceeding the, uh, population density as stipulated by the ordinance, if we were coming in here with less than ten thousand square feet, we'd be exceeding the density, if we exceed ten thousand square feet, we're not increasing the density. Uh, this is a, a D variance, uh, where we need to show that in particular cases, uh, for special reasons, for example, a special reason can actually fall into three separate categories, imperative, beneficial, hardship, uh, which we really haven't either, but promoting the general welfare, and my testimony that in the sort of the master plan, this promotes the general welfare. Then, then we have to show that the board can grant these variances without any substantial deficit, so we're good, if we're not substantially impair the attempted purpose of the development. So we're looking at the positive criteria and the negative criteria, and the negative criteria would be if we don't harm the neighbors. Well, as you see, the duplex development in this area, and, and we're short by six feet, is my testimony that we're not doing any harm. And the positive criteria is creating housing opportunities and according to the, uh, the master plan, uh, and, and as far as conformance with the ordinance, the ordinance says on an existing lot, fifty feet wide is wider. You have a fifty foot wide, ten thousand square foot lot, it fits a duplex. And that's what we have, we have a fifty-four foot wide lot. Uh, and, and my testimony is it fits a duplex, and that would be the criteria. If we look, continuing in Terry's report, um, he indicates that, uh, we should provide testimony with respect to the revenue, and obviously this would be a duplex, to keep the revenues clear, the same as everybody else, uh, we should provide testimony with respect to the irrigation, and certainly the applicant is proposing to comply with the normal board standards, where we would have one-third upgraded architectural features, we would have irrigation, we would have landscape landing, so that, uh, the, the applicant is going to be more than he would require, but he came in for the same size building, uh, on the same, on, on, on the lot, instead of a duplex being a single family, it's going to be the same size, the difference is going to be one extra family, so the, the additional parts, when you look at the size of the neighborhood, it's my testimony that the one extra family would be...
First of all, when you drive by, did you tell the difference in this six feet, or is that your favorite location to be?
Yes. Well, it's, my, my, my testimony is that the impact of this would be de minimis. Nobody driving by is saying, uh, this is a variance lot. But all of these lots that I've shown, many of them, you know, have side yard setbacks variances, uh, depth variances, some even have area variances. I challenge anybody to drive through there and pick out which way that has variance, they all look the same.
Eddie, I just wanted to, uh, break you in, in the whole essence of the year, there's one change that Brian has since last time you were here. It used to be master plan two thousand and seven, now it's used to be two thousand and seventeen, so just remember, don't get confused, okay? It's the master plan two thousand and seventeen.
As, as Terry comes out, and Brian says, this is a unique lot, in the sense that, as Terry pulls it out, and he says, we don't have a big problem with adding to the area, it's rare that you see any reports that I've seen of Terry, that he would go very season by one hundred thirty-nine square feet, he wanted. So with that, if you figure it out, it's not that much, so I, what, what is the other thing?
I just, I, I have an issue for Jerry first, and then I'll answer the application. This is a planning board application. Why isn't it back at the planning board? They have jurisdiction on it, I know we didn't have variance.
There's, there's a huge variance, and the planning board, a lot of the jurisdiction there, the variance, all of it, all of it.
So...
You're right, you're right. For me, the one thing, unfortunately, because of six feet, that makes it sad.
That, that makes you sad, so...
That's why I, I wanted to say, we had a plan to say, that is really important.
Okay.
It is planned, when they call it the six feet, which you can't see or notice, that's why it's here.
And, and actually, the ordinance lists duplexes as a permitted use, but then next to that, it says, if they have ten thousand square feet and sixty feet wide, uh, if it was done very clearly, it would have listed as a conditional use, but the planning board and the zoning board have interpreted since two thousand and five, when that was put in there, that it's a conditional use, even though it's under permitted use. Uh, if, if it was a permitted use, we would be at the planning board, and then we would just be asking for a lot width variance, rather than a use variance, which has much less burden, then we don't have to show the same excessive use and...
So now, so, 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 fine, I, 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 I get it, so now, let's take a look at, uh, what was issued at the planning board whenever it was issued, okay? I have you here, in front of you, the, the, the variance map, right? And if I'm looking around, and I'm trying to get into the logic of what happened, and now I have to, that was evident, of what happened during that approval process, okay? If I'm looking at, at this whole, this whole subdivision of the year, I see lots that are duplexes that are thirty-three feet wide, thirty-three feet wide, right? So that makes it sixty-seven, sixty-six, sixty-seven. There's another one here, um, oh.
Planning board that is...
Oh, okay, so it's got exactly what I wanted to say. Okay, so, so the planning board, in its right wisdom, at that time, subdivided all the, all the subdivisions over here, where each parcel had the proper frontage to create a duplex of, of sixty plus feet. Apparently, when you take this piece of property with the next door neighbor's property of fifty, one second, fifty-four feet, right? Fifty-four and fifty-four is a hundred and eight, so therefore, there was not enough to put in another, two duplexes in there, so they split it down into two singles. That's where I, that's where, if I would have to, uh, look at this...
There wasn't enough room in there to put two duplexes, but the planning board could grant that, they would have had to grant the variance in order to do that, but the planning board couldn't grant it.
I, 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 I understand that, but the planning board granted what was permitted to do, and apparently the, the applicant didn't come in front of the zoning board at the time to get the duplexes done, maybe that, that point...
Exactly, because the applicant thought that the single-family lot would be a premium, and somebody would like to have a single-family lot, and that was the need for the single-family lot in that area.
Fine.
And the, the purchaser of that lot thought the same thing, uh, and he found out that is not the case, uh, and that's why we're here to see it.
Fine.
And if you mentioned the wisdom of the planning board, you should mention the wisdom of the client of that application as well, uh...
Okay, let, let's talk to, uh, move over here, I see lot number twenty, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh four, nineteen oh three, those are all single-family lots of fifty feet wide. Why are those, um, good at fifty feet wide, and these are fifty-four, not? Why are those sold at single-family houses, and these two are not?
But...
Mr. Oliver, uh, I don't think...
I, I think, I think all lots are good, so let's start there, but you're saying, why are those single-family...
You said, but then you know you can't sell them.
I'm saying the, the applicant can't sell this one, and, and those lots were, were developed before the applicant tried selling his, uh, and, uh, obviously, I was the one representing the applicant in the meeting, and I also thought the fifty-four foot wide lots, uh, somebody could come and say, I, I want a lot that's a little wider, even though it's ten thousand square foot, an R seven five, I have more property, uh, and apparently, uh, the current development of the neighborhood, uh, is different than what I envisioned, uh, when we presented that application.
You're just a role in Congress, as a reason why people are wanting singles, you can't sell in a way, nobody wants to have a single, they want to be, they want to be something different, as in...
Can I, can I see that, how it, it matters? Those are all duplexes, those, those blues? Can I see that, that's all duplexes?
Yeah.
The blues are all duplexes?
Nineteen oh, nine, nineteen oh four, nineteen oh five, those are the...
That's the one, yeah. Nineteen oh five, nineteen oh...
There will be an Arlen, non-Arlen, uh, around the corner, those are singles, nineteen three point five.
Really smart, smart.
And those are singles.
Why are they out back there? There's, there's two lots in the back there, and so this is all, this, this is bust up, all busted, next thing you know.
Three days, all the duplexes.
I'm in the vocal, same panel, go away from scene of vision, go away again. All similar panels, these are all similar panels.
She knows that, she knows that, she knows that.
And this is all, this is like several, like several lots. Yeah.
Somebody's picked up a white.
Yeah.
Hey, those lots are like seven five hundred square feet.
What?
One of them is a single time, like seven five hundred square feet.
Yeah, very small lot. They're not by, yeah, yeah, it's just a little more, yeah.
The lot is already finished.
Okay, right, that wouldn't be appropriate for it.
And you gotta know these lots are supposed to be on the pole side, just, just going to that...
Which pole side, where?
This is the pole side.
Melville, Melville's pole, I didn't see, I didn't see the pole that, the dime bottom, okay. Okay, so Melville's all single-family, that all of it down there, that's the bottom, okay. But it seems to me that all those, all those, majority of the duplexes that are approved over there are all as of right approvals. That's, that's the way, that's the way I am, I'm, I'm reading that map.
So the, the duplexes in this lot, in this block that were approved, were at the board.
Yes.
Uh, the other duplexes, which are sitting in blue here, some of them have confidence as board, and...
Very few, right.
That's what I said, and I also said that anybody that drives through there is going to be able to tell the difference.
Okay.
Between ones that had the minimums, really, that the board granted, without, except for the exception that they have the one-third architectural, uh, features, the stone, the landscape, and the irrigation, so those might stand out as, as being more attractive.
Okay, I still have a little bit of thing, why didn't you come here in the first place? But I hear, I hear what you're saying, okay. Um, I'll turn to my fellow board members, if any fellow board members have any, anything to say in addition to what I have just, uh, reported at.
I just wanted to ask you a question. So, yeah, one more.
Yes, one more.
So it's six feet on this lot, that's about a little over ten percent of, of, of the width of the lot.
Correct.
And you're calling it de minimis?
Well, I'm calling it de minimis, because the ordinance says that on an existing lot, you can build a duplex on a fifty-foot wide lot. So if it's good enough for an existing lot, which is what this is, uh, and, and fifty-four is bigger than fifty, that's why I'm referring to it as de minimis.
But how should they, the great wisdom decides to split the bidding and say, oh, the new lot is sixty feet, and you're saying on that it's de minimis?
Well, my, my, uh, impression of the legislative intent when they did that is that if you have an existing lot that's fifty-foot wide and ten thousand square feet, the duplex fits fine. If somebody's coming in to subdivide it, they should try to make sixty-foot wide lots, still ten thousand square feet, but sixty-foot wide lots, so that there's a little extra width to it. Uh, and, and I think it was more an encouragement, and, and I, my opinion is that it should be a permitted use, and you should just be... Well, our case isn't that, I mean, we didn't get the cellings to the family, so we want a duplex. Our case is that we have ten thousand square feet, which is the area that's required. An existing lot on fifty feet can have one. A proposed lot for the ordinance, you need sixty, that's why we're here. We're asking for that relief. And my testimony was for the master plan, it turned the N S Malang's law, is my professional opinion, that it meets the criteria for the variance that were requested.
When the planning board did this entire subdivision, also, I'd like to point out, when the planning board did this entire subdivision, you only got the single family, you asked them to build a duplex or you didn't bother?
The planning board granted the single families that they could because they were newly created lots. So they, newly created lots that were sixty-foot wide, and this was left as a single-family lot. And, and I did that application and I never expected to move back here because I thought somebody would come in, especially with the nice homes that are to this outlet, somebody would come in and say, this makes sense, I'm gonna build a single-family home and I'm gonna have something special in it. The applicant bought it and that hasn't happened, and that's why we're here.
Do you know how many of, of the lots in the area, the duplexes that were, that were done in the area, were variances, ran through five or seven?
I didn't know, two or three of them that were granted by the variance. Two or three of the ones that are colored in. And, and again, when, when I came to the board asking for those variances, I said that the relief that was being asked for was de minimis, and, and I think it was, and I think the board made the right decision, and I think any of those that had that minor relief that was needed, the beautiful homes, the neighbors are happy with them, and you can't tell the difference.
By the way, I just wanna quote that, Muriya, can you? I just wanna quote that to the board, that if we approve, if this one gets approved, it'll be the next lot coming the next month. So we're not, we're talking about four duplexes here, four homes, not, not two, this one that, in case anyone may pick it up.
How long, how wide is that duplex? This proposed duplex, which size is gonna be how wide?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet each?
Twenty feet.
So there's a potential, there's a potential, we can have two within the box, so potentially six, that's a bigger. We're having that issue now when people come in back and guess.
That's, that's a very cynical attitude, and I hope it's not true.
We are, we are, no. We have, I gotta like what you do. No, it doesn't exist. Okay, anyone, anyone else wanna say something on the board? Seeing none, well, I'll open to the public. Anyone from the public, wanna be, wants to be heard, on appeal number forty-sixty-three, I'll pick the symbol, can you step up?
One at a time.
One at a time.
Sir, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm at all?
I swear.
Give us your full name and spell your last.
My name is Joseph Kushner, K U S H N E R.
Your address, sir?
It's two forty Lincoln Street.
First name?
It's Yosef, Y O S E F.
Thank you. I live on this corner of Melville and Lincoln, so I'm, I'm right across the street from this proposed relief of the zoning. I, a lot of people in my neighborhood are very passionately opposed to this, and it's two different reasons, but I'm just gonna give my perspective, and it's.
When did you move in, how long ago?
About ten years.
Ten years ago? Two thousand nine, okay.
And to just explain my point, I have to give a very brief history. I don't need to bore you, but I think it might be very relevant. These houses, these houses, the duplex right next to this lot, is a duplex, it's two lots and one house.
Relax, son.
I'm sorry?
Relax, let her move first.
Okay. Lot number two.
Yosef, excuse me one second, please. Jura, can you move that map?
No, I can, I can.
Over. There's no three of these.
Sorry, can I bring it in?
Then I won't see it. Just put it up, you're on three of these. Yes, yes, good. All right. Yes, thank you.
Melville Avenue, Melville Avenue used to go straight. It was a paper, then it turned into like a dirt road, where, where now is a house, and then it continued into a paved road, okay? A developer came to the neighborhood, and it would have, across the street from us, there would have been only two buildable duplexes. Right now, there's a duplex, and now they're trying to make another duplex, and then maybe even another duplex. But there would have been only four buildable houses across the street from us, four buildable homes. And the developer proposed that if we allow him to vacate, we don't oppose, and we allow him to vacate that paper street of Melville, that way it was a dirt road, he would get about thirty more feet, and he's not gonna add any more houses. So there'll be four houses, and, and the same four houses that he could build, because you'd have only four houses, it would be two duplexes. Instead of two duplexes, it would be nicer to do is one duplex and two singles. So, and we had meetings with him, and I spoke to him extensively about it, and he told us he will never add anything more to these four houses. So if we give him this, this, this vacating of the land, we're not gonna be losing anything. Now, I wanna explain to you what would be losing. You were aware, Melville is a, here's Melville, is a, is a cul-de-sac. All the people on Melville, you got out, go this way, down Lincoln, and go, go to six zero, right? So you have to go down, down Lincoln to Arlington, you go, there's only one access to, which you have to use Arlington. Arlington, Lincoln is, is extremely, this chaotic intersection, because Arlington also is tough. It's a big sure head of Arlington. A lot of people come up, and then everybody has to exit through Arlington, Arlington, Lincoln in the morning, has most buses on these cars going through this. It's extremely, yeah, it's like, it's like, it's like, the buses will not go down Lincoln to Melville. The buses will only go down to this section. All the kids on Melville have every year, are the more kids, all those kids have to live at this distance. Absolutely desirable to, to see the regime. The only way, only to get to see them is from this intersection, the bottom of every morning, to manage. Now, we know, if we're gonna vacate Melville, it's gonna be that, that always have to go to Lincoln. So we were very concerned that if it's gonna add more houses, it'll get worked out. This is always on our mind, and we were clear, we'll never be adding houses, we said we will not add houses. He's built one duplex and two single houses, even though theoretically he could have built two duplexes, he said he'd be two, they want to do much, only be four houses. He's not adding any. So he took thirty feet from the, from this paper street, and he was able to build two singles and one duplex instead of two units. So he did it. Then he sold these two single lots. The developer bought the single lot, he tried himself, and then he, then the original developer had a directive, and they said, I'll make a contract with you, I'll divide it, I'll buy it divided. If you don't divide it, I'll buy it divided. Which is exactly what we told him, we don't want to do the vacate.
Same developer?
Same guy, same guy.
Came back.
And I told him many times, I, I will not let you vacate it if you tell me it'll leave more houses. And he told me straight out, I will not make more money off this, I will not leave more houses. And now he's coming, and while he's trying to sell, or owns the house, he's doing the vacate. He's hired a person, he's already trying to vacate, so he's doing the request for the relief. He has a contract to purchase it, as it becomes. There are people in the neighborhood that have over excess three hundred thousand dollars for a slot, which is good money, I don't know why, it's a glad he said he can't sell it. I mean, if you want five hundred thousand, you have to sell it. At some point, you can't sell it, over a decent price. And you can't, you don't, and it's a large, it's a big house. And it's not like everybody wants duplexes, because duplexes are in bad, minded, duplexes are not in bad. And because of that, we, we, and the reason why it's only six feet.
Okay.
And I'm just saying one thing, the reason why it's only six feet is because it would be twenty feet prob, twenty-foot problem if he wouldn't have taken our land. He took this land with a clear understanding, and now it's only six feet, because he took thirty feet of ours, with understanding, he wouldn't do exactly what he's doing.
Got it, thank you. Anyone else, can you step up?
I just wanna indicate, much as very popular, but keep on clapping, we'll never get out of here. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm at all?
I swear, I'm telling the truth.
Here's your full name and spell your last.
Victor Zyamba, C I D M P K.
First name?
Abid.
Are you the applicant?
I'm the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, I live on six five nine, also in Chicago. Okay, so I bought this property a couple of years ago, thinking, I would join this one called Neighborhood. Now, I came, I found the property that I found more desirable, and I now seek to sell that property, get my money back, and be able to build a home on the property that I own. Now, I had it marketed with a real estate broker for over two years, and nothing's been offered. After the excess of three hundred thousand dollars, it was four, five years ago, three oh five. So an excess of three oh five after the taxes that, but again, I mean, the liquid real estate price in general went up, so I would expect to have at least seen, you know, somewhat of money that I meant, which was not offered. One of those offers was to try to get me cash later, I don't know what, what that was, like in a year from now, but obviously, it wasn't helping. So I bought, so after trying to sell this as a single family, I discovered that it crashed itself. So that's when I went to him to try to continue to sell it, and he suggested that if nobody's buying it as a single family, most likely, it's not because nobody wants to live in Neighborhood. Most likely, people do wanna live in Neighborhood, and it came over at a very reasonable price, in fact, if nobody offered it, because of the amount that I paid four years ago. It's a neighborhood that works, shows more work, more people should wanna live, and I should assume that people do wanna live there, except that they can't afford the prices of building a single-family mall, and those that do are not necessarily interested in this neighborhood. The people that would like to live there would appreciate that it would be sold as a, as a duplex. Now, just one more point, is that, I don't know, I wasn't aware when this meeting between the researcher and, and the developer took place, but I met with, with the researcher and a bunch of people, and they told me that I'm hungover of the, of the conditions that this property was sold with. What I tried to explain to them, I don't think they understood, was that there were no conditions that this property was sold to me. I bought this property without any string attached, there was a title search, and there were no, no conditions whatsoever. So I consider myself the owner of this property, and I can do with it, just like everyone can do with their properties, I can do with my property, and nothing is binding me, I mean, the zoning board can try to do what they like, but as far as property, sorry, as far as the purchaser and owner of the property, I'd like to do with it as works for me and for people that apply in front of me. So the fact that they, when they split the property, they're spoken or writing, but as far as my ownership of the property, I'm asking the zoning board to do the subdivide in order that I can sell this property without a loss.
Thank you. Terry, were you the engineer at the time of the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna come back to.
I think, in our assessment, this is a common issue, like the same.
Yeah, I'll just come back to a couple of questions. Okay, anyone else in the public, wanna be here, can you step up?
Sir, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm at all?
Sure.
Can you give your full name and spell your last?
Sherman Plotnik. S H I M O N P L O T N I K. Plotnik, P L O T N I K. Two thirty-eight Lincoln Street, next door to.
What's your address again, is it here?
Two thirty-eight Lincoln Street.
And where's that?
That's.
Want a Melville? Okay, but.
I've appeared some remarks that I just taken, when Mr. Penzer mentioned that people don't wanna buy this as single lots anymore because of the duplexes, I think that in itself speaks our case. There's a reason for that, that people living in single neighborhoods don't want duplexes, and there are people interested in buying this home, but obviously, the more duplexes there are, for various reasons, people don't wanna have single homes there, and I'm trying, I'm gonna try to explain my understanding of that. Every Kushner explained, the morning, I stand every day in the morning by that corner, it looks literally like amusement park. You have a narrow street with cars parked on both sides, and a shul on the corner, and cars, buses bracing down, making sharp turns. Invite anyone here that would like to come witness it, I'm sure a user would give hot coffee and Danish juice for anyone that would like to come witness this amusing scene. I wanna take a different note and discuss the safety issue that duplexes causes. Question I have is, what happens when your child runs into the street? We tell them, quickly get out of the sidewalk. What happens when your child is walking in a parking lot? You quickly grab his or her hand and make sure they stay safe from all moving vehicles. When you build a street of duplexes, you're in reality turning your sidewalks into driveways and parking lots. This is a serious safety hazard that many, that many in this town have been unfortunately dealing with. What would be considered a wild idea in other cities, and a liquid itself in other nice neighborhoods, is for some reason expected to become a normal and accepted concept that neighbors must live with. Parents that live in a safe, beautiful neighborhood don't feel comfortable having their children playing on sidewalks anymore, and have to constantly watch them like hawks to make sure they're not behind a car. I'm referring to one specific tragic incident that happened in a complex, but there unfortunately may be more. So the obvious question to the board is, why would the selfless, amazing board that gives so much of a time to help the community be giving approvals for such dangerous and poor quality living conditions? And the answer is obvious, it's not to benefit builders, it's to accommodate the masses of people looking for houses. This crisis has forced them to approve this lifestyle. In addition, the board, I imagine, takes into consideration that the people purchasing these complexes as homes have made the decision to accept the reality when they buy their homes. This is where tonight's discussion differs from the latter, as you see from the crowd that came. We all bought single homes and have been living for, for years on a more quiet and safe lot. In addition, neither, neither are we here tonight to discuss a housing crisis where many homes are needed to accommodate masses of people. This is about someone trying to subdivide a single lot property, their personal financial interests, and in reality, turn this full block, because like we mentioned in the board, the next person's gonna do the same thing, into one long driveway. We are asking the board tonight to respect our safety and quality of life, we ask you to remember the rationale behind all these approvals, and not let others take advantage of it on our expense. Please prioritize, prioritize the requests of the current residents, their safety, quality of life, over those from the outside of the neighborhood who for financial reasons wanna change the status quo. Thank you.
Quick question, when did you move into the neighborhood?
Ten, ten years ago.
Also, ten years ago?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public? Okay, can you step up?
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm at all? Can you please give your full name and spell your last?
W B I N S.
First name, please?
B. Two sixty-three.
Before you begin, where, where lot is in your home, or are you respectful of this project?
Um, it's that way away.
The orange is the, is the project. The orange is the project. Yes.
I can. One more. I can.
It's not to benefit builders, it's to accommodate the masses of people looking for houses. This crisis has forced them to approve this lifestyle. In addition, the board, I imagine, takes into consideration that the people purchasing these complexes as homes have made the decision to accept the reality when they buy their homes. This is where tonight's discussion differs from the latter, as you see from the crowd that came. We all bought single homes and have been living for ho... for years on a more quiet and safe block. In, in addition, neither, neither are we here tonight to discuss a housing crisis where many homes are needed to accommodate masses of people. This is about someone trying to subdivide a single lot property, their personal financial insert interests, and in reality turn this full block, because like we mentioned in the board, the next person's gonna do the same thing, into one long driveway. We are asking the board tonight to respect our safety and quality of life. We ask you to remember the rationale behind all these approvals and not let others take advantage of it on our expense. Please prioritize, prioritize the requests of the current residents, their safety, quality of life, over those from the outside of the neighborhood who for financial reasons want to change the status quo. Thank you.
Quick question. When did you move into the neighborhood?
Ten, ten years ago.
Also, ten years ago?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public? Um, okay, please step up.
Do you swear or affirm until the whole street is... Can you please give your full name and spell your last? First name, please.
B. Rangers. Two sixty-three.
Why are you not speaking to the mic?
Okay.
Before you begin, where, where about is your home? Your respect for this project?
Um, exactly. Away, um...
The orange is that, is the project. Oh, the orange is the project. Yes.
On the corner, on Arlington.
You're the corner of Arlington. Good. Okay.
Um, Mr. Mike, stand. Most of what I want to say is already said. And I'm not a speaker, I just really don't want to interpret any private property that's three feet. Um, the patient that was blocking up the magical corner towards previous project that drove a Kushner on my head said, applying the verbal on the spot specifically, it would not approve for women duplexes, and at the time they could have maybe discussed approving it. Now the fact that we have another duplex at the end, which cut off the option of having a street zone in Melville, all the traffic comes to my corner. I stand outside every single morning at the bathtub with my children. If a bus driver does not make a complete stop blocking the entire intersection, there are so many old accidents. If the mother's not there, there's a bus that is not stopped blocking intersection. I'm there, so my school, my children's school, school bus will stop, and my kids won't have to go up the floor. As the buses come, the reality is you have kids running from four corners to try to catch the bus. The kids leave the bus to come home, where I'm not outside, and many mothers are not outside, so it's not a reality to be at four bus stops before more, um, than prior afternoon. But if your child has to get dropped off and the bus doesn't stop any of your child's in need, the cars are all in rush, the all kinds of cats up the bus dock, the bus, before the bus sign comes, the stop sign comes down on the bus. Um... Melville and this little block of Lincoln have no alternate route to get out, so there's basically traffic. If you're gonna approve this duplex along with, which are mainly common, another one will be doubling the amount of houses that's blocked out of all those developers in the entire neighborhood, which is likely to have more than four times the amount of cars trying to exit this one little block that we've here. He doesn't live in this neighborhood. He lives there, it's our block, it's our home, it's our children, it's our people.
Where about, uh, when did you move into the neighborhood?
Ten years.
You also moved ten years ago?
And also, there's no way, the park is at the end of Melville. That is where the children want to go, whether they're blocking, arriving, the bikes, roller skating, any way they go, there's cars zooming already. And the more car, the more, um, duplexes we're gonna have, there's less sidewalks, no one can play as it is. We're just making it, we're just...
This wise, you live in a single family home or...
I live in a single family home. Most of us are not tenants. Duplexes tend to bring tenants. And now, um, our neighbors of Arlington, and we try to get the seat up, but we got the seat, the Arlington traffic, a lot of them have two apartments, a studio apartment plus a regular apartment, bringing five cars per house, which is ten per duplex. So you're talking about instead of someone in the neighborhood who is likely to buy the single family home, so they would go down twenty grand, yet they're asking an outrageous amount of money, no one's buying it, and the fact remains that you have a bunch of duplexes lined in the backyard, which took value away from his lot that he bought five years ago. So I feel bad for the small amount of money he's gonna lose, and the duplex that this developer already sold a number of years ago on the corner of Melville, we can suffer.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, does anyone in the public have anything more to add than what we have just heard? If you have something, if you have something different to say, please step up, except to repeat itself, or you can just come up and just say, I agree with what I heard and have... Or just raise your hand. With the time is short, and we have a lot of other things that we have to hear.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm? Can you give your full name and spell your last?
Two oh five Arlington Avenue.
And where about is it for the project? The orange is that project? You're in a single family house right next to a duplex?
Um, right now I'm ten in the basement. Right now I'm, I'm ten in the basement of two oh five Arlington.
Okay.
Um, I do have the property next to, um, one of the, like, this boat, um, big boat, it's a single family home. Um, my first point is that there are people building single family homes on this block. My first point is that there are people building single family homes on this block as I intend to doing so, so it's not limited to, um, duplexes. The second, um, point I would like to make is that right now as you come to the neighborhood, um, the backyard are all around a grassy middle, obviously, there are these fences built, um, and the neighborhood gets built up and together. Putting a low narrow house down towards the middle is, is making a tremendous eyesore on little, including houses in people's backyards, um, whether you're coming from the Arlington end, whether you're coming from John Street, and, um, that's...
Are you living a duplex or a single family?
I live in a single family.
Basement or a single family?
Basement or a flat building, um, that, 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 uh, that's our...
A single family or a duplex?
Single family.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, okay, anyone else have, anything else to add? Or if anyone agrees with this, agrees with what we just heard, please raise your hand. Anyone disagrees with what I've just heard? Anyone disagrees? Okay. Okay. Um, with that, I will close this to the public, and we will continue our deliberation here. Um, Terry, why would a contractor that has right mind vacate thirty feet of property when he could create another, um, uh, street out of Melville to, 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 to White Street? Or to Johnson Road? Johnson, whatever it is. Okay. Were you aware of that? We just heard from a Mr. Kushner that the property developer made a, um, condition of non, of, of subdividing that was enabled, that they shouldn't object to it if they allowed to vacate that thirty feet. Were you aware of that the last time?
I don't recall. I'm not sure if anybody's ever made a mark on this.
Okay, so you, you, you just came, uh, okay, so when this thing came in front of the, of the planning board, the vacation was raised on its place? Or was subject to vacation?
I don't recall whether that was a part of the original mine project.
It was sub... subject to vacation, and there are environmental impacts on that road that would have prohibited, uh, extending the roadway through.
So that ends my question. What kind of environmental effects are there?
There are, uh...
Terry?
Plus, there's a C one buffer, and there's threatening endangered species downstream, uh, similar to the issue of extending Vine Street through, that the D E P, uh, is, is not inclined, you know, letting house is not...
What's that? There was a, there was a light sheet card on over there?
Category one stream has a three hundred foot buffer.
Right.
So if you're within three hundred feet, it's, it's an impact. So the impact impacts the side yards of a couple of the houses.
And which, um, um, category, um, one stream is there in that neighborhood?
It's, it's part of, uh, the drainage basin to the Batita Conch. There's also wetland, and the, the map, the line subdivision map, if you have, it should show a wetland line and a buffer line.
Brian, you aware that, um, that...
I mean, I'm just trying to figure, figure, figure this whole, this whole thing out since we weren't at the planning board approval, which was taken, uh, back in two thousand fourteen, no, this, fourteen. Why, uh, and how bad that impact would have been to put the road in...
Chairman, I wish, the whole respect, I wish it was at the bond.
I know that was at the bond, but I'm trying to understand what transpired, because I just heard a, a part of the testimony from the public, um, um, comment, that the developer made a deal with the neighbor that if you allow this to vacate, I will not put in an extra house.
It seems to, it seems to respond to what you're saying. We own the lot, we can sell it back to the community.
You know, trying to understand that.
I don't recall that being part of the application, and certainly if it was, if there was some documentation on that, I, I assumed somebody would have brought it and waved it as, as a typically shift. Uh, so, you know, at, at this point, that that's his representation, but as, as the property owner, then he had no knowledge of that. He has no restriction, uh, and, and it's a different notion at this point.
We'll take it. Give me a... I, I hear you, but apparently probably I would assume that people bought in the neighborhood knowing that those are not, were not approved for duplexes, and that's why they bought...
Everybody that we heard get up and testify has been there for ten years, so they were there when this subdivision was done.
Correct.
They didn't buy, they...
I, 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 I grant you that, uh, but I would assume that people, people buy it, look at the neighborhood, the characteristics, um, uh, this guy in the back knows in front of me, there will be only single family, it will be duplexes, you know, all these things take you to a mess. I, 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 I understand what you're saying.
You're not asking a question, you're making a statement.
I, I exactly for you. Exactly. Okay. Okay, what do you want to say, Abi?
I wanted to say that...
Guys, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
I wanted to, I told you something, but why would this, 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 you just don't speak, it's more like, he can speak to you, he was there, he just ran in, I grabbed him, he just grabbed him.
Okay.
But if you want to get these, uh, he can't be...
So why don't you give him a call, he'll have to calm down, and, and we'll hear his testimony in a few minutes. Okay? Uh, you want to come up?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to...
Can I, can I give, can I give him a glass of water? Can run again? Uh, Abi, you haven't had opening words, have you?
Sir, would you raise your right hand?
One second. He's a witness. He's a witness to the, to the, to the, to the testimony. Okay, come on.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm until the whole street is...
Yes.
And, uh, would you spell your last name?
I, 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 C.I.H.O.R.N.
Okay.
Morty's, the last would say affiliation, how you know, anything else, lay a background to the board of town. Morty's a, a, a proof, Morty's a known real estate broker, a regular broker, involved in the area.
Let it testify.
I just wanted to know...
Yes. I, I'd like to hear what is involved, what's on there, and its background. So, as I, excuse me, excuse me, as a personal witness to what transpired during that, I'd like to hear it from the other side of the, of the pavement. Go ahead.
Um, my negotiation a couple of years ago with a lot of people in this neighborhood, um, I was working not in the capacity of a real server, rather than the capacity of the developer. Um, I was a partner in a project called Arlington Heights, which is pretty much, surrounds the majority of this particular property. Um, there was, there were multiple meetings, um, with regard to vacating Melville. Um, that is true. There were, there were two different, there were differences in opinions in the neighborhood. There were some people that were strongly in support of vacating Melville. Majority of those people, there was people on the north of John Street, and the reason for that was, is because they didn't want additional traffic coming through Melville, which would access this particular project. And then you had the other, other people on the other side, which were the people in the cul-de-sac of Melville, who the majority of them were opposed to the vacation of Melville because it gave them one less access to their area. There was, there were conversations, we called a meeting for the whole neighborhood. If I'm not mistaken, four, five, or six people showed up. I wish we would have had the same attendance with the beautiful, but we didn't. It was a meeting, the meeting was called for by someone, Shaima Kushner was in his house, and he called multiple people to the neighborhood, to the, to the meeting. I wasn't involved in putting together that meeting, it was more to the people, Shaima Kushner, Yasi Kushner, and some other people that were there. With that being said, there were conversations, we heard both opinions, and at that point, that point, Manashia Miller was brought involved, um, because the request was made to the township committee, and Manashia Miller reached out to Yasi Kushner, who was his first cousin, and said, Yasi, please give me your opinion, and please talk on behalf of the neighborhood and tell me, what is the neighborhood's desire? Please give me direction. If you tell me the neighborhood wants the vacation, I will go ahead with it. If you tell me the neighborhood does not want the vacation, I will not go ahead with it. With that being said, Yasi Kushner approached to me and said to me that it seems like the majority of the crowd did want it, they wanted the vacation, I'm just telling you what, by my understanding from what he told me, and he said he strongly is in support of it too because he wants his father-in-law to have the house, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is on the corner of Lincoln and Melville. And as a result of that, he said to me, you would like to have, that his father-in-law should have privacy, his father, his father-in-law is a great rabbi from Toronto, Rabbi Miller, and he thought it would be a very good location, being close to his particular house, and also having the privacy of a road vacation to the woods on the other side, which are wetlands, and as a result of that, it would be a good spot for him. With that being said, the, the decision was, and this message that was relayed over to Manashia Miller, not with my pushing or anything like that, was with Yasi Kushner giving his, his consent on behalf of the neighborhood that he wants the road vacation. With that being said, the road vacation went forward. Yes, during some of the conversations, there was questions asked to me, and actually, do I remember straightforward where the person who actually asked me that question was Shlomo Fine, but I may be wrong, it was a couple of years ago, I'm not that young anymore, I don't have such a sharp memory, but Shlomo Fine did ask me, and I remember him straight out asking me point blank, as a result of this road vacation, will I have on my side, because he lives on the north side of John Street, on the corner of Melville and John, and he wanted to make sure that this won't result on John Street having more additional units. If I recall correctly, we calculated the numbers, and we figured out that the amount of units that we can fit on John would not be added by having the road vacation, it would just be narrower lots, narrower units. With that, there was no promise made that nothing in the future will ever happen because I can't control the future. But one thing I can tell you is when they ask you that question, whether or not, based on this approval, are we gonna, based on the road vacation, are there going to be more units? Answer was, no, there aren't gonna be more units. I can't control what happens in the future, my intention was very, very clear. I sold this project exactly how I developed it, with that in mind. I sold it as twelve single family houses, I'm sorry, twelve duplex units and four single family houses. One of the buyers was Zemba family. They put it on the market, they had it listed, they had it, they tried to sell it themselves, then they used a Realtor to try to sell it, I'm not sure why their plans changed, but I gotta be honest, they're not the only ones who bought a single family lot, who decided later that they would like to sell it and can't get close to recouping what they put in there. There's someone, Yosef Radner, who purchased a lot on Arlington, one of those fifty by one fifties, which have no chance to become a duplex because they're single family lots, and they're seventy-five hundred square feet. He bought one of those lots, and then he decided, you know what, it's not gonna work for him to build a single family house there, and he tried to put it back, back on the market, and he's also taking a big hit, it's been on the market for, I think, over a year, it's gone to three or four different Realtors, and they haven't been able to sell it. With that being said, my intentions were very, very honest and clear. My intentions were when I initially developed it, the intentions were to sell it exactly how I, how I developed it and how I promised I would develop it, and I actually sold them exactly how I promised I would develop it. Now we have a situation, three and a half years later, and we have a buyer, who, I think it's three and a half years later, who has, who has a scenario where he has a hardship, he brought up the concept of possibly able to get out, not looking to make a profit, just looking at the breakeven. He asked me if I think it's the right way to go, I said yes, and I said, matter of fact, I'll try to help you sell it. I even, funny, I even presented it to Yasi Kushner to buy it as a duplex lot. His response was, and I don't believe duplexes don't belong there, the response was, there's not enough money to be made. But at the end of the day, the point is, is that the, the circumstances have changed. What ended up happening was, is that this buyer and...
Guys, can you please all leave, to leave, finish this testimony? We can't hear ourselves say, how many times I have to repeat this?
The buyer over here is coming with a hardship, it's a very feared and minimalist, um, um, variance that he's asking for. It's six feet, it's not changing anything about the neighborhood, the neighborhood has lots of duplexes, and some beautiful duplexes. Um, and as a matter of fact, one person told me, he's coming here to post, and I go, please, Morty, if you get an approval, I want to buy one of them. So, but he has, he has to come here because he's under the influence of a person who owns the powers to be in the neighborhood. So... So, what can I do? But at the end of the day, it seems like there is a desire for people to buy duplexes there. I've had multiple people asking for duplexes, but they can't afford a single-family, unable that they want to be there. With that being said, I just wanted to lay out what happened, here's the facts, you guys gotta do what's right, and...
Okay, I have a couple of questions. You understand that this board cannot rule based on someone's bad investment? You know, just because you can't recoup what you got, doesn't mean that we shouldn't approve or disapprove a project for him. So, let's just put that part of testimony on the side, right? Okay? Now, we heard before from a gentleman named Yossi Kushner, telling us that the condition, and I want you to focus on this, on this question. The condition of him allowing the vacation to go through was that on, on Lincoln Avenue, you'll remain the same four houses. And therefore, you will not, if you vacate, it will vacate Melville all the way through, then it'll still remain with the same four houses. The only thing that'll change is that it'll become one duplex and two single-family lots.
The answer to that is, is that we had a very clear-cut agreement of exactly what the agreement was, under what conditions this thing would be approved. We have, we have an agreement, it's written up, I wish I would have brought it here, it's all signed up, by a couple of different representatives of the neighborhood. They made it very clear what the conditions were, and it's in writing and it's signed. Condition number one is that Morty Icort or the representative of Arlington Heights LLC has to donate fifty thousand dollars to the shul. It has to be held in escrow, so they can fight about which shul it's gonna be going to. But ultimately, we gave a fifty thousand dollar check made out, because they said it would ultimately hurt the quality of life, and we have to enhance the quality of life by giving a fifty thousand dollar donation, whether it's a shul, whether they want to use it, different shuls, however they want to use it. It's Joseph Motz Woods' escrow account that they can work out, and there's three different people signing that agreement. That was condition number one. Condition number two was that we have to pave a pathway from, it used to be like a dirt, a dirt pathway,
Right.
From John Street that went to the other side of Melville to Melville, through, you know, through that little pathway. The deal was that we had to pave it, we paved it. Those were the conditions that I have signed up, and as a matter of fact, they were even talks that were never even committed to, and that's what it says in the agreement clearly, is that the developer never even committed to it. But because it had been spoken about, at one point in time, we agreed to put it in as a commitment, and we actually came forward, and we successfully did what we were supposed to do. Those are the conditions, and that's what the agreement was. What happens is, a lot of times, there's conversations that go on throughout the whole process. People say this, they say this, you're sitting around the table, "Are you gonna have more units as a result of this?" No, but it's the conditions, there are very differences between someone who makes a statement as what your intentions are, as to whether or not it's a condition of a road vacation. There's two different points. I don't recall that. Is it possible that it was discussed? Anything is possible, because again, it's three and a half years ago, and there was conversations with probably five or six different people, ten or fifteen different times. So, it's very hard to commit and say, "Oh, we sat down and we made a commitment and we said," because you know what, it would have been put in writing like everything else, that was put in writing. But again, I'm not, I'm not gonna be held for, I'm not gonna say a thousand percent, because I know what, I just don't recall a hundred percent. But what I could say is that whatever contingencies and whatever conditions were made are all in writing, and that's signed by different representatives of the neighborhood.
Mr. Ashen, okay. Let me, let me finish my show, and I'll be right back. I want to draw your attention to the vacationing of the, of the Melville Avenue, okay? I heard an answer from Brian Flannery, but I'll listen to you, since you were involved in it. Why in red line did the township want to vacate Melville when it wasn't cut through right up to the John Street?
Why would they want to do it?
Yeah. Instead of keeping the grid going.
Why did it feel there was no purpose to it?
What was the purpose? Why would the township agree to it?
One of the reasons maybe is that some, some of the people maybe didn't want to have access from Arlington throughout this, maybe it possibly the traffic flow, I don't know. Honestly, no idea about the traffic.
Traffic flow?
Yeah, because she's the one, I think ultimately, I made a representation on behalf of the township, that it was no further use or benefit to the town. So, I don't know. I gotta be honest.
I mean, there's a lot of benefit of making a road go right through, ease the traffic out of the John, out of the John Street.
I'd rather say, I don't know. I know there was some sort of stewardessment on that piece, I don't know if that affects it, I don't know. I'd rather say, I don't know.
Quiet, quiet. For now, I'm okay. Morty, what do you think?
Not really. True. And we could debate, you know, who said what and when, but my question is, when you met with these families, who were they representing, and, you know, who told you who they were representing? Were they just individuals who had their own interests? Would they say that they were representing the entire neighborhood, because this is an entire neighborhood here, who's coming in, you know, from last, from home?
The representation that was made to me is that the word I sent out, and there were different people from different parts of the neighborhood, and they claimed that they were representing that section. Like, for instance, I had one person who was representing the people north of John Street, he said, because, and his name was, there was Shlomo Fein, and I think Amerin Altske there. Then there were some people who said they were representing the cul-de-sac, because they were the people who would be technically, could be negatively impacted by the road vacation. That was someone like Shema Kushner, I think there was someone who was involved there. I'm trying to remember all the people that were there. There was another, Black Pete was also a vendor there, I'm not familiar. There were people there, and it wasn't like it was a secret. What is basically, what I said to them was, is that get as many people as you can around the table. I even, I talked about provide, focal chart, whatever it is, bring as many people as you possibly can, come here, so I can hear their opinions, and we can discuss it. And this is what they came up with. It wasn't like I said, "Here, only VIP members only," it was not that way at all. They're the ones who called and said to me, "Here, this is what it is."
I mean, were they self-appointed?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know if anything's happening, you know, the impact of what they've done, that they were not remaining, then.
Okay.
Right, but at this point in time, was there a commitment as far as I recall? No, and the facts are, is what the application indicated.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Morty. Thank you, Morty. Okay. Having heard everything going back and forth, I am going to, I'm going to ask for a motion on this, on this application.
I'd like to say my...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have a video file, I know that.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Firstly, I do apologize, I'm pushing one now, you still, I can tell you, he's the best man for most, he had it.
For what?
Most. My doing at Fire Department, he is lead down, man short, and back up.
Okay. No, no, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We're not, we're not hearing anything, let's hold on. Go ahead, Mr. Panzer.
Can I follow?
Mr. Panzer.
Okay.
Mr. Panzer, let's stay focused on the application, and that's not bringing any outside distractions in here.
I heard a lot of statements that were done tonight. However, the facts on the ground are, there are duplexes, there are duplexes all over. There are duplexes that were approved as a matter of right. There were duplexes that were approved as a matter of variance. There was all over duplexes. Suddenly to say, "One duplex will cause a cataclysmic, whole cost," is a little bit exaggerated. We're talking about one unit, instead of one half of another part. My client, I heard him say, I met him here the first time right now, and he's very honest, he said, "Listen, I'm not looking for the killer. I just want to break even. I don't understand why, if they knew this was so important to them, why didn't they buy it? Or why didn't they make..."
They were in open supply.
Excuse me?
The market, the market.
Can you please leave? Please, let it be quiet.
Testimony, I don't want to hear it, because it's been on the market for seven years. It couldn't move. Granted, it might, you don't have to look at the financial considerations. On the other hand, if the situation is so horrendous, or it's not such a terrible thing that it stands out that duplexes are not harmful, what I'm trying to say is, every twenty years of exaggerating before the board what the conditions are, it's not a situation where you're plucking down one lot and you're looking at other. You look on top of you, you see duplexes everywhere. It's obvious that the only reason this property is not being sold is because it doesn't belong there. It changed. The people that were there ten years ago, they had single-family lots. These duplexes are not ten years old. The duplexes changed, the facts on the ground changed. And unfortunately, the facts aren't as they are. What you have to judge an application for you is what are the facts right now, not what it was ten years ago, five years ago. It's a test of progress, sometimes progress is good, and sometimes progress is bad. Here, the situation is, what do you have the facts before you? Your job as a trier of facts is to judge the facts before you. The fact before you is, you have a neighborhood entirely full of duplexes. And this is the one of the few lots that may be two for you or a destiny entire neighborhood, but I'm only dealing with one lot. One lot that somebody bought and can't sell. The question before you is, will this variance granted impact either positive or negative criteria, which we have Brian give for the testimony, that's what you have to do. If you don't find that, then you can't turn this down. When we say the minute, this, we're not making a joke, we're not making some consulting intelligence. You have sat here for many years, you've had all kinds of variance applications. Let us talk, what are you talking about? Six, you can say it's the growth set back to set, but that's not really true. What it really is, is what are the impacts on the neighborhood? Will it impact the plan? Flannery will bring back the minutes to fifty, both for his testimony. Will it impact anything in the neighborhood? Will anybody be able to see the difference between fifty-four and sixty? No, because all around you are duplexes. Let's weigh between what they're saying and what the facts on the ground is, one duplex, one actually units. I dare say, if it was so important, they knew that the property was listed, whether you liked it or not, it was the sale, and nobody wanted to buy it. But on the other hand, they said, "Okay, let this man have a single-family property, and let him help on it." It's the same for you, because nobody came forward except to come here tonight and destroy it. So, what is going to happen if you've got the authority? It's the same for them. So, he has a single-family lot, he can't move, he can't do anything else, he's suffering. So, if you think that's gonna stop the property, it's not your problem. You create, if you have the way before you, the scales of justice. What is the scales of justice? Is one really real, is that monster? So, we're talking about, you heard Morty Icort testify, or Mr. Kushner was on the road, Mr. Kushner was a public relations lawyer. I wasn't there, this Icort was, and I believe he testified, and you gentlemen have duty to him, if they can see what he testified. Do you believe, I wasn't there. Morty says, "This is what the deal was, we never sold it, we never said, if the things change, you're punishing my client for what the conditions on the ground changed the past ten years." That's all that's been said. So, now I need to write a form, so I'll be back to fill in to mark positive and negative criteria, and that will be charged.
Abi, Abi, I think we're heard enough. I think I heard positive and negative criteria.
I have to testify.
I, 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 I think...
I've heard testifies of positive.
Of positive criteria, there's a lot of birth to Lakewood, and it's coming up more and more every year. We definitely need more housing, I already said it before. The time, the time is, is short already, I have a lot, a big agenda, and I have to, I apologize, but I have to...
Let the record indicate.
Yes, let the record indicate.
You said positive and negative criteria, you did.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'm up to a vote.
Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Yes.
Something was brought up, and I realized that I noticed people, people were upset about.
You've got a rock in the mic.
Something was brought up that I noticed, people in the crowd were upset about. When, you keep on, you kept on asking when they moved in, when they moved in, and I, I got why you were asking that, and most people testified were there from way before, ten years before. But we didn't get from the crowd if anyone moved in afterwards and moved before.
I realize that. I, I realize that, but that's why, yes, is there anyone in the crowd who agrees with the application? And I saw zero.
No.
Okay? Okay, I, I, if anyone agrees with the, with the, the testimony objection that we referred to now, and they all said yes. I ask if anyone disagrees with the objection, so please come up and let us know, or raise your hand, and no one raised their hand.
The other point I want to point out was that...
One second, so that's why, and that's how we cleared that here, that everyone who's here now is against the application.
The other thing is that, Mr. Icort made up a stickment that included applicants as a, as testimony, and then there were a lot of people... I don't know if that's a point of the jury that they have a right to object.
That's, that's the excellence we would come to that.
You're not here to see me to determine whether there was a cross pay, or so, as the promised in text, in terms of three units versus ten. That's not your responsibility, nor, nor are you a... If there's an issue about what we currently say, stop it, or pay was to agree with the promise, that's for other court, not for you. So, you're not to determine tonight, and I don't think it's wrong, it's worse than anyone. Who's telling the truth about this potential promise, which was only in before units, now it can be five, and as a result of that? That's not before you, and you should not be trying to base your decision on whether you believe one way or the other. The decision has to be based, the decision has to be based upon testimony, and the evidence that's presented. Don't make a decision based upon who you believe, and whether a promise was paid or not. That's not an evidence.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm ready for, for...
Chair, I just want to bring one, one thing up as a possibility, I know that many people might not be so happy with this, but, but, I don't know if it would be a possibility to push this off, and the reason being is, I would like to see the proof, to bring the proof in writing. And if it's true that there is, there is buyers, there is apparently, the applicant claims that there's no buyers. Apparently, according to the public, there are buyers. I think if we would bring things, or things that were said on both sides, we have nothing here in writing, we have here say, "I understand what Jerry orders right now," but I think it makes a big difference in terms of making a decision. I see, I see right here a zone in which there's plenty of duplexes, I understand that, I understand the traffic. There is traffic issues all over Lakewood, especially in the morning, all over Lakewood, there's traffic issues. I understand that here, there's not so many exits and so many ways to go out. I want to see in writing what happened, who, not exactly who's saying the truth, who's not saying the truth, but it's gonna help make the decision. Before I, before I came into the application, before I heard the public, anything, I'm looking at an application with ten thousand square feet, fits a duplex. What are we talking about, six feet? It makes no difference, it fits perfectly. Now I hear what the public is saying, but I, I don't have clarity on what's going on. I would feel more comfortable to see what's going on, take it as a, I don't know if it's a correspondence.
Okay, I, 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 I thought about exactly what you were, what you're saying, but I think it's very not right, and we're up to the vote to make them come back. It would be like a little bit before, or, I would agree with you, but we're up to the vote, I think they all came out over here, and I think we're ready to bring them all out again, with new testimony, and, 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 and hear it all over again. I, I thought about exactly what you're saying, but, but I'm, I know, but we're such, we're such a lot. And therefore, and therefore, I would respectfully ask for a, 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 a motion.
I would like to make a motion to deny this application, and I just wanna, you know, like to disagree with my colleague here, that the gentleman that owns this property bought it as, first of all, we're not supposed to make any determination based on financial. Yes or no, he took the loss or didn't take the loss? But he did buy it as a single-family lot. It is currently a single-family lot. He never bought it with the intention that it would become a duplex. So, I don't see any harm to the current owner. And for that reason, and for the reason that the whole neighborhood is against it, I would like to deny this application, to make more moving.
Okay, I have a motion denied from Monsieur Inger. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Hal Hawiston, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Gelli?
Going in favor of the motion is to deny the application.
Correct, correct.
So, yes, or no?
Yes is the no, yes, yes is a deny.
I abstain.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Naktali?
No.
Mr. Bibiak?
No.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halviston?
Put it down.
No. And one, two, three denials.
One abstain.
One abstain, two no.
It doesn't matter. Okay, it doesn't matter what I vote, so...
Wait, oh wait, I'm sorry, it's, it's...
It's, okay.
So, it's three to deny, and two in favor.
What?
We don't have a stand.
So...
I'll go.
You have a stand, do I get to vote?
What?
You want to stay.
Okay, guys, okay, French, French, forget about it, okay? Before I give my vote, it's very hard, this, probably one of my hardest applications that I've ever gone through in my tenure, I'm sitting on this chair. Seeing that the whole neighborhood came out to vote against it, and that one person is in favor of it, I'm thinking... is in favor of it, I'm thinking to myself, is it one single investor losing some money, or is it a neighborhood that doesn't want it? It, it, it's, it's kind of conflicting myself. How can I go ahead and approve an application when the neighborhood, literally the whole neighborhood is here, doesn't like it because of the issues that took place, issues that didn't take place, and how the application was presented at the time, and especially when the planning board approved this in this matter? So if I would have had some people that would have said, I don't mind the neighborhood, I don't mind the single-family duplex over there, you know, perhaps we could have swung it both ways. But here, I have zero people that accepted this application. I'm, I'm going to be going with the community at large who would have basically said that they don't want it, and I'll agree with that some other way. I'd like to ask everyone, please exit quietly, and we have to move out, we're going to take a minute of break. When we come back- Okay, moving forward, we're going to hear appeal number four zero six four, Lori Mary Canar, three eleven Eighth Street.
Mr. Chairman, before you give that, I have an application, uh, I think it's the last on the agenda this evening, I believe you're going to get reached, uh, if I can, does that just not carry?
Four zero seven five?
Uh, pinces wall handler, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, fine. Um, okay, so can I have a motion to carry four zero seven five, for the reason that we will not get to it tonight, so they can over?
No, no, no.
No notice, and with a waiver of time, correct?
No waiver, yes.
Yes, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion from, from, okay, just for the record, uh, much like that, um, and, um-
Munchingberg.
Munchingberg, Walco. Uh, I have, I have a motion from Much Langley to, um, carry it. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Obie Gonzalez. Madam Secretary, Walco, please.
Mr. Gilly?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Bibiak? And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Halverson.
Yes. Anyone that's here for appeal number four zero seven five, pinces wall handler, um, you'll be heard on six eleven, June eleventh, back in this courtroom. Thank you, good night. Good night. Okay, moving back, uh, Lori Mary Canar, three eleven, um, Eighth Street.
The advocate proposes what is depicted for the architectural plans as adding a two-story addition, an unfinished basement with an exterior entrance proposed to an existing two-story single-family dwelling, which appears to include an existing twotone style basement.
Lori, do you wear a firm bill?
I do. Brian Flonery, Jackson, Jersey license, cuts on the air, professional man. I have three different marks, eight one, the top map, the Smith is showing you proposed eleven hundred square position, position of access to property. I assume eight two is the back map, showing where the property is located. I assume A2 is the back map, showing where the property is located. Uh, and A3 is a area showing, uh, the subject property, which is surrounded by multi-family. Uh, looking at terrace four, uh, is indicating what we're, we're asking for. We got an existing, uh, two-family dwelling. Uh, we're asking to put an addition on it and reconfigure it, uh, for the same two-story dwelling. Uh, we're at the ROP zone, which allows uses, uh, that are permitted by the RM zone. Uh, and the RM zone allows a host of same or a lot of criticized, uh, there are different provisions available. We're looking for multi-family and two-unit multi-family. This particular property, uh, with two units in the building meets the definition of a multi-family. Multi-family for the ordinance is defined as more dwelling units located within a single building with a private entrance to each dwelling, which is what we're asking for. Multi-family in the RM zone, the 12,500 square foot. Uh, we have 7,500 square foot lot, which is basically what we're, we're saying. What we're exceeding when you look at the proposed requirements listed in terrace four. Uh, the lot area, uh, we vary in four, the lot width, another existing condition, we are going to put a front setback to the existing building at 24.5 feet instead of, uh, 25. Uh, the side yard setback to 9.78, which we're entitled to. Uh, the continuance up by the ordinance, but it doesn't apply to the law required. And then the building coverage of 40%. Uh, if you, you go by a, uh, single-family or two-family standard, the, uh, RM standard, uh, for multi-family is 40%. So there's a lot of, uh, different configurations and a lot of different moving parts here. But the application basically is for, uh, to take a two-minute multi-family in the building and put an addition on it so that it better houses, uh, new families for the building. Uh, the applicant did get a building for this same-sized building. He can get a building for it for the same-sized building. What we're here saying, we want this to be two separate units that make it, uh, put a wall down middle so that they're separated, uh, and they do something that we think makes better in the neighborhood of what surrounds it. Uh, it clearly is something that, uh, uh, as I'll lay out my testimony, it kind of puts out with detriment. Uh, the, uh, the applicant is indicating that, uh, if, if the ESS suggests, the question gets approved, the applicant will send the property by buffer separation from the others. Uh, so, uh, looking at the, uh, best plan in 2017, uh, the, on page two, it goes into the population growth and it goes into all the efforts that we have, and includes that, uh, the township should, uh, provide for the growing population. On page seven, uh, on the vision statement, it says encourage development, redevelopment based on smart little planning principles. My testimony, that's what it says, we have the existing, uh, two-family, multi-family units on the property that's outdated, we're proposing the same two-family in a large building that'll accommodate the families that would be living there, which are surrounded by multi-family, as you can see on A3 on the side. So I'm sure the board is familiar with that area. Uh, it's, it's an area that's predominantly, that's the Yeshiva of multi-family. The forum across the other side of the street, uh, is the major Yeshiva campus is on Ninth Street. It's an area where there's a lot of walking, and it's an area where there's a need for the housing. Uh, the municipal land use law, NJAC 4055D2, under the purposes of the act, says to encourage this selection to guide the purpose of use and development of all lands in the state, no matter which, quote, public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Uh, uh, on your E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to well-being, the person, the neighbor, the community, the region, uh, preservation requirement. And my testimony, that this does, that it's appropriate use of the site. Uh, we're asking for, uh, my opinion minimal, uh, bulk variance relief. Uh, and I think we clearly satisfied the criteria for a C2 variance. Uh, C2 variance, again, to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. We look at A3, you see that this piece of property already has, uh, two-family, uh, dwelling, uh, surrounded by multi-family. Uh, and what we're doing is redeveloping it with a more appropriate building. The purposes of municipal land use law being advanced, which is what I read from NJAC 4055D2, uh, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to public good. And, and based on the ground uses, this will fit in there. The applicant is proposing the fencing. They'll also do the, uh, landscape planning, and all the items that normally that we were asking for. It looks nice. Uh, the variance will not impair the intensive purpose of this own plan or the zoning law. Multi-family, committed here, multi-family, awarding this here, the multi-family we're doing, and that the benefits outweigh the detriment. So my testimony will be within our benefits and the detriment's circumstantial. Uh, continuing in, uh, terrace four, um... He asks for, uh, justifying the parking relief, uh, that's requested. And this property is in an area, uh, where it's the downtown regional center. It's a residential property, if you look for the residential standard, they said that the board should pay recognition of an area that has public transportation, uh, and is an area that has... So we're providing two parking units per unit. Uh, terrace four indicates that we should be providing four, uh, the, you know, the fourth space would be added by stacking another one, but in my testimony, that it's not needed, and that the variance would be justified, and certainly, uh, falls under the criteria of the C2 variance. Uh, and the rest of the report would certainly satisfy the opposite.
So it's quite a neat, a little better, more language, Terry, what we're doing over there. I, I see over here, um, you're putting on a new addition of this existing building.
Yeah.
This existing building is a two, is a two-family house. And you also said that you're not increasing it in an improved size of the addition. Want to prove, where are we?
We're increasing, we're increasing the size. And, and, and we could build the same-sized building in the current configuration, uh, and just expand one of the units to the same size.
Okay. Play that, that's all right. You can build this size building now, over there?
Yes.
Was that coming to us? Probably bigger. You, you have an approval?
We have it, we have a zoning permit. We, we could submit to...
Not from us, zoning with us.
Right, right, not from you. Well, we, we don't need to go to you. We, we don't need to go to you if all it is, is, is a building permit that's entitled by right.
What is entitled by right?
Well, by right, you can put an addition on a building, so we just stay within the setbacks, and you don't...
How much is that addition?
The size that's shown is, uh...
25 feet? You can, you put an addition over there to the back, to the back one?
Yes.
In an ROP zone, probably.
Yes.
You can fill up this whole thing from here down to the bottom, right? What?
Yes.
You could?
Yes.
Okay. In, in, in an RO, in a, in an ROP zone?
Yes. Yeah, 40%.
And he's, and he's, and you're within 40%?
Yep.
Yes.
So why are you here?
Right. Because we, we want to make two units that make more sense. We don't want to put an addition on one of the units. We want to make two units that make more sense.
Again, you could go ahead and put up this size unit?
Yes.
From, which is approximately 88 feet long?
And, and if, and if the applicant was trying to do something underhanded, he could put it up and then he could change all the walls inside and end up with the same thing. He's not, he's come here saying...
Wait, 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 don't, don't interrupt me about the underhanded. This is lightning, okay? A lot of underhanded things happen over here. But let's, 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 um, um, right over here. Um, you could go ahead, put up a building 88 feet long, right?
Yes.
And put in as many bedrooms as you so pleased as in this 88 feet with a kitchen, living room?
Yes.
And so on?
Yes.
And he can do that in two, two families?
Well, he already has a, a two-family multi-family.
That's enough.
So he can put an addition on that building.
So you can put an addition on the building, another 44 feet?
Yes.
And expand each apartment 44 feet?
Yes.
So you can, he can technically have two apartments, one on top of each other, with five or six bedrooms each? What?
Yes.
Yes, with an attic?
Yes.
And a basement?
And a basement?
Yes.
And a basement of 24 by 44 by 88?
Yes.
So then, so, okay, so now, why are you here? Let's go back to why you're here.
Because...
What, what, again? We're talking about the lot progress here. Do buildings have 40% proposed areas that are allowed?
30% allowed is for duplex.
Okay, so...
If you go multi-family, which is what it says, 40%.
So why is that, it's not a zero, it's not a zero lot line?
Because there's...
It's not a zero lot line?
Because there's...
Yeah, so why are you here? So let me ask Terry, Terry, why is it here, it's not a lot line? Brian is saying that, that 40% coverage is allowed in ROP. Uh, and the reason why it's 30% allowed is that we're to do that, probably, we're to do that.
The, the two-family standard, let me just...
Uh, your question.
Yeah.
If I, Mr. Speaker, Chairman, if you read our comments letter, I, I wasn't sure what you meant. And if one of my comments under one, they pertain to architectural drawings. Uh, the architectural drawings show this building with what appears to be a base required, which is, you know, it's what I think, is a busy feeling, it's a problem. Then I'm, I'm looking at what appears to be having another two-story building with an unfinished basement with an empty rear entrance. I've been here with 10 years, I know this looks like a most common. So my question...
Right.
This shows back to the question, is this, is this a good...
Well, that's, that's, that's where I'm going over here. Why, why, you, you, you just testified that you're putting up over here, um, two units. You're, you could technically expand each unit 44 feet and make each floor greater.
Yeah, so I can put like...
But it's not... Hold on, I'm confused. You're looking to put up a back unit of, uh, five or four bedrooms, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Five bedrooms, in the back. What are you planning on doing in the front? Are you planning on keeping the two, the two apartments in the front?
No.
Oh, okay.
Making that one unit in the front.
So you're converting the front to one, one unit?
Correct.
Okay? So you're putting in the, another unit in the back?
Correct.
So in essence, what you're doing is, instead of putting up two units, 25 by 44 by 88, you're putting in 25 by 44, one, 24 by 44, two, and the unit's gonna be split by only getting first and second floor?
No, no, two units be back to back.
Two units be back to back. With each unit, we'll have a second floor, bedroom second floor, kitchen, living room, dining room downstairs.
In, in English, it's called a duplex?
Or a multi-family, because it's not...
Front?
And a basement.
Front unit?
Well, the basement is there regardless, first and second. Is it? Brian? Duplex is a zero lot line, it's a zero lot line. Brian? Excuse me, thank you. Yeah, but as, as I was doing, it's a multi-family, he said. Because it's not a zero lot line, it's a rental. Multi-family, so he's putting in two apartments here. That's what he's doing. If it's a duplex, it's going side by side. A duplex is side by side, zero lot line. Brian, is there presently a basement, a front?
There is a basement and a front.
Okay, is that...
Finished basement.
Pardon me?
Finished basement.
Okay, is that, does that have the proper, just windows and everything? I don't think so. Oh, he answered some, I'm sorry. But I, I have a question, ask the chairman. Yes. The line, I, I think I need a clear definition of what multi-family is. I mean, you know, if it looks like a duplex, it is a duplex, that's what it looks like to me. The question is that, um, if you're building multi-family, so as part of the application, does he have to apply and say, okay, multi-family, but not two-family, because I'm gonna have a basement rented out? And in multi-family, my definition is the amount of families that you put in. Duplexes, for some reason, in Lakewood, every duplex is allowed to have a rentable basement. It's just the way duplexes are. Every house is like this. But this is not a house, this is a multi-family unit. It would be no different than an apartment. So if an apartment house, they, they can't rent a basement. It's a pool for that amount of units. So what are we looking at here? We're looking at four, a, a, a multi-family house of two units, of three units, of four units. They're raised since it's a basement apartment. I just wonder how many units we're looking at? So, so that's what I asked before.
Right.
And I was told, wait, right, this is what I was told. That, that he's looking for two... Okay, at least four apartments?
At least four units.
Four units?
We're, we're asking for two units.
Either, either two units?
Let me be clear, we're asking for two units.
Yes, please be clear.
This is gonna be a multi-family building, and I read the definition, and I'll read it again, a multi-family.
Listen quick and simple. Mr. Flonery, how many units are there now?
There's two units there now.
And how many will be there if your application was approved?
Two.
So how come the basements on each...
Well, the basements here cannot be rented out, and it, and it won't be rented.
Separate entrance.
What, I, I had separate entrances to my basements in my house.
Do they have separate? The, these drawings don't indicate outside. This shows, this one shows the kitchen and everyone's...
The definition of a multi-family dwelling, two or more dwelling units located within a single building with a private entrance to each dwelling. That's the definition.
In another, in another town or another place, they may call this an up-front-to-back duplex. Lakewood's definition of a duplex, or was it two units, side by side, facing the road? It's the, there aren't two units, side by side, facing the road. So in Lakewood, it's not a duplex, it's a, it's a two-family. As the chairman said, every house in Lakewood can rent out the basement. A single-family detached, and a duplex can rent out the basement. The exception on the, uh, single-family, uh, detached is the A1 zone. So if you live in the A1 zone, you can now rent that basement.
So I see here a kitchen in the basement. And an unfit, I see a kitchen in the basement, and an unfinished, and an unfinished basement in the, in the back.
And that's gonna be a basement for that dwelling.
Okay.
Two dwellings, one across, one in the back.
Okay, so, 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 so what you're saying, what you're saying, now, let's, 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 let me turn to Jerry. Jerry, nah, I meant Terry, I'm sorry. Terry, what he's saying is, that he's putting in a multi-family building. Okay, it's one building with two apartments in it. Our UBO, it's called multi-family.
And these five, each building has basements, you see, and...
So you're considering this?
This is, um, the show, it's...
Yes, I see that. Yes. So you're, so the... Okay.
I'm asking for more testimony, you're the board, you know what I mean?
Okay. Okay, help me out, Brian.
We're, we're very clear, we're gracious. We have a two-family, multi-family, and a, and a zones that allow a multi-family to... In this smaller building, really doesn't account, accommodate...
Our professional just said, since there's a fire separation wall between the, the two buildings.
No, any multi-family is gonna have fire separation wall between the units. That's the, that's the building code. Uh, the, the Lakewood definition says two units in the same building with, with separate entrances. That's what it says, it has separate entrances. There is a firewall between it, there's an old building that we're adding, a new building up. Uh, the, the Lakewood definition says two units in the same building with, with separate entrances, that's what it says, it has separate entrances, there is a firewall between it, there's an old building that we're adding a new building on, but it's still one building. It's one building, you look from the outside, it's still, you look from the top of the building, any multifamily is with a firewall.
Are you gonna, what, uh, let me rephrase my question a little bit, is this gonna be two different lot, lot, tax lot, lot?
But it would have to be condo in order to be, and, and.
I'm asking you a time lot, I'm asking you, is, is, is this gonna be a back, is it gonna be rented out, or is this gonna be, um, one, uh, uh, two different tax lots?
The configuration, the configuration of what we're asking for is a multifamily building of one lot, so it would be one tax lot.
One tax lot.
I'm not saying, cause I, I hear, you know, what can happen in the future, and I'm telling you what can happen in the future, somebody could go and try condos, so it would be two lots. But that's not what we're proposing, we're proposing one building that goes by one entity, uh, and there's two units that can be rented out.
Okay.
And, and illegal things, uh, I have no control.
Are you putting in a basement apartment?
No.
Can we stipulate that, that we, no basement apartment?
Yes.
Can we put in basement great windows?
Uh, I, I don't think it's a good idea, because if you finish the basement, there's people in the basement, we tried that, that was at the end.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay, so. This is a testimony, what I hear from the applicant, what he's saying, okay? Okay.
Where's the, uh, where's the access to the basement from, from the apartment? To its fairytale, I don't see any.
There is no access to the basement from the outside. Just an entrance into the apartment, and then, and then through the apartment, you go up, upward down, there is no door to the basement from the first floor, right here.
There goes the basement?
Yeah, it goes all the way, all the way upstairs.
I know it's all for that.
Guys, guys, guys! I, I don't see, Jura, I don't see any stairs to the basement from outside.
I don't see any architecture either, are these, are these architectures?
Yes.
These are, these are architecture. This is just a layout.
Day, January twenty-nine eighteen. There are no, there are no stairs that into the basement from the outside, um, 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 on the, on the rear one, and on the front one.
The rear one has stairs.
Has stairs? Where, to the basement, from the outside, where?
From the inside and from the.
This is into the apartment.
Oh, that's the basement. I mean, uh, I, I, I'm corrected on that, that's not going, that's going steps up into the.
Steps up into the apartment, it's not going into the basement, yeah, I know, it's not gonna work this out.
The only access to the basement.
Is through the inside, excuse me, just right through the kitchen. No, no, you, it's the inside, there are no outside stairs to the basement.
From the foyer, uh, slay, kitchen area.
Right. Correct. Correct.
Brian, is the, the existing house, is that gonna be rehabbed, how many of it's old and beat up, is that?
Yes.
It's gonna be redone?
It's gonna be redone, and the front's gonna, uh.
Is that gonna be torn down?
No, it's not being torn down.
It's gonna be redone.
It's gonna be redone.
The outside too?
Yes. And land being matched.
Okay.
Yes.
The whole one building is gonna match.
The building is gonna match, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brian, how do you, how does, uh, people who live in the new addition get to the front of the house?
Uh, there'll be a sidewalk along the side of the building.
Which is not drawn on yet. That means there's no, there's no parking for the, where would the parking be for the new addition?
The new addition would be on the left-hand side.
Of the front, on East Street?
On East Street, yes.
And there'll be a walkway, a new walkway there?
A new walkway, you said.
Cause I saw a walkway there, whose walkway is that? There's an existing walkway.
That's, that's, that's.
That's all we're saying, whatever you report indicates, we would need to do a flash plan, lay all that out.
So that walkway would be used?
The.
Existing walkway.
The existing walkway now, that'll have to be revamped.
Who does that existing walkway belong to?
So that walkway can touch?
From the entry, here's that walkway, it's on the neighbor's property.
Okay, so you would be creating a new walkway, that, that people living in the addition would go to the back, down?
Correct.
So what's the base variance out?
Uh, Terry listed variance in his report, and, and I agree with him that it's confusing, uh, uh, according, uh, there's different ways to look at it, but if you look at it as a, as a R-RN, uh, we comply with the, uh, forty percent coverage. And we give the existing variance, we have the line area, uh, line area, New York, you know, it's supposed to go to seven-five-hundred, you're supposed to have a, uh, a, uh, a lot with, uh, the building at that. Uh, that, that would be the way I would look at it, uh, Terry looked at it more like the criteria for two-family, and looking at it as the criteria for two-family, two families need ten thousand, and, and, and we only have seventy-five hundred, uh, and, and, and with the seventy-five, we only have fifty. So we're gonna, the, 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 Terry listed more restricted, those are the ones we're gonna ask for, uh, according to rather ask for more, than if somebody said we didn't ask for enough. Uh, so we're, we're asking for the variances Terry listed, which is that we only have seventy-five hundred square feet, we need ten thousand, we only have fifty feet, and we need seventy-five, the front setback, twenty-five is required, we have twenty-four point five, and the side setback, nine point seven, eight feet, uh, is existing, and twelve feet is required.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Yes. I'm looking at the second floor of the existing. Um, are there two sets of stairwells going from the ground floor? You explained it's one in the front and one in the back. And I see that on the ground floor two, that goes up, I don't know if that's going to the basement, but that's coming from the second floor, because when I look at the second floor, I see that there's a stairwell all the way in the back left corner that's going down.
Steps that go up and down, okay.
Okay, and, so, where's the, where are the steps that go into the basement? You said that the steps in the back are going to the basement, those are actually going from the second floor down, they're not going to the basement. The basement has its own exterior entrance.
The, the existing unit, the, uh, rear left corner of the building.
Right.
Has steps that go all the way from the basement to the, to the second floor.
It doesn't show, it literally shows that it's up, and then down, coming from upstairs.
Well, when you look in the basement, it says up, that's the only way you can go.
Right, okay.
When you, when you look on the first floor, it says up, and then it's showing down. If I had drawn it, I would have, I would have always shown it up, uh, but, uh, and, and then on the third floor, it has just down, which is the only way you can go.
I mean, this is like, I think it's what, about eight hundred, nine hundred square feet floor? The existing parking, let's say, house? And, front? Let's say, I'll say fifty.
Thousand seven.
Fifty by twenty-four, I think it is?
Yes.
Okay.
So there, there's three floors, it's a three-thousand square unit, which is accommodations, it's, it's four bedrooms, and the, the basement is, is finished, uh, is three-thousand square foot.
Can you, can you describe the renovation that you're doing, um, on each floor? And I'm gonna tell you what I'm looking at, like, concerns. I look at the new addition, it's a nice layout, it looks like a real apartment, it looks like, you know, somebody who lives on the ground floor and lives upstairs. Do you have concerns with the basement, that later, you get a little material, multifamily, this is really all, what, what it means in the future? But on the, on the ground floor and on the second floor, the layout is almost identical, I mean, I, I don't know why there's a bathroom with a full bathtub, full bathroom on the ground floor, that's kinda odd, it's a small apartment. It seems, and on the second floor, it seems to me that also they draw a wall to create, um, you know, proposed living, it looks like the layout is identical, and really all you're doing is, is saying, we're gonna make, you know, put a kitchen on the ground floor, and it won't, we're gonna take the one on the second floor and take that out. I'm assuming there's a kitchen now on the second floor.
Yes, and, and you're asking why there's a full bath on the third floor, because there's a full bath on the first floor now, you know, multifamily, all that stuff.
Right, it just, it does, it just, it also, like, the renovations being done to the existing house, to make it into a suitable apartment, what it looks like, is it's pretty much gonna be the same as it is now. You know, if you came and you said, hey, you know, we're gonna cut this out, we're gonna make rooms that look like rooms with a flow, a walk flow and everything, you know, I can see that, it just looks like you're just gonna have the same people living there, you go addition, and, you know, you'll have six families living there. I see a dormitory. I see a dormitory that's right, you know, a little annexed to the.
Well, again, we can get into, you know, what people can do illegally, if, if somebody, if somebody wanted to do this, they could build this, just like you started, you get it built, and then go inside and change it, and nobody would know what was going on. We're coming here, I, I think this layout makes sense, I'm creating the living areas downstairs, the bedrooms upstairs, uh, and having a, a finished basement.
Guys, guys, please.
Which makes sense for this, this size of the unit, uh, and as you say, the unit in the back, it has no outside stairs to the basement, uh, that's something that the board wants to see on single families and duplexes, because there's not two apartments in the basement. Here, uh, basement apartment is not allowed, they have plenty of neighbors, so that if somebody has a basement apartment, uh, it's very easy for any of the neighbors, the people all around them, to see that and, and report it, uh, but, you know, we're presenting an application that I think makes sense. Two, a two-family home, that family is there now, and we wanna do one that's nicer, that accommodates the families that wanna live there, uh, and, uh, you know, we're representing that, put an addition in, and they can't break the law.
And just to be clear, the, the stairwell in the back left corner of the second floor, is that designed to go to the basement, or to go to the ground? Because it looks like it's completely, it looks like it's a leaky box stand, it looks like it's a stairwell that's meant to go from the second floor to the basement, not from the second floor and first floor, it's not gonna look like an access from the first floor going up and down.
But I, I see your point, because it's showing the refrigerator in front of the door, uh, uh, that's what's there now, uh, obviously, we're gonna redesign it, because from the first floor, they would wanna get to those steps also. And, and again, it's, it's our architectural plans, these are.
Jura, the refrigerator will be here. Will you be here? Will you go sit there?
Maybe you can grab a bottle of beer.
I mean, certainly, if the board doesn't like the level of, of the design of this plan, we could come back, and we'll, we'll make better plans. Uh, but I think the, the concept that we've shown is that we're gonna have a three-thousand square foot unit in the front, and three-thousand square foot unit in the back, you have that one upstairs, maybe you're in.
I don't, I just, but I have a woman, and I'll get to the public.
Okay.
So if anyone in the public, are you finished, Jura?
I am, thank you.
Uh, if anyone in the public wants to be heard, please step up for appeal number forty, forty-sixty-eight, uh, Corey Mary Canaric.
Sir, can you raise your right hand? Can you use my, or firm, your, your?
My first.
Can you use full name, spell your last?
Michael Lutz, L-U-T-Z.
Name, address, sir? Address?
I don't know where to start.
Your address.
My address is eight-one-four Lipton Avenue. We are the adjoining neighbors, adjacent neighbors to this house, uh, which is eighth and ninth off Lipton Avenue.
You live on those two houses, huh?
The townhouse, uh, even lives there, Alito lives there, the writer lives there, uh, uh, Hammond lives there, Matt Brown lives there.
What was?
Uh, Lee Brown lives there, and I. Firstly, you made a comment before about, uh, they need the housing in that area, it just struck me kinda funny, because you live in a house there already, with two families, and you're taking percentages from a duplex, and you're putting that on this, on the same percentage of a multifamily. I think a multifamily home needs more percentage than a duplex, yet if you take a percentage from a duplex, and you say it's not a duplex, you may have a wall down in it. Uh, you said no one's gonna be in the basement downstairs, it happens to be that this building presently has three stories, upstairs, downstairs, and the basement, and people have rented the basement downstairs. I didn't say anything, and no one said anything, because we spoke to, uh, Chris Canaric, and told him, if he's gonna come forward with this, this is what's gonna come out. This is the third round we're going with Robert Canaric, we did this a year and a half ago, the eight, uh, eight meetings are always postponed, finally, uh, you did folks said, uh, either take it forward, or withdraw it, and you didn't do it. So now we're coming back again. Now, you have a two-family house here that produces income, the income it produces right now is a fairly good income. I just don't understand how you're going to invest so much money into inventing a house for the same two families. You did, that was gonna make money, you can lose, you know, your handle of funds, no matter how much you're gonna charge, you say someone's getting eight hundred dollars now a month, they're paying rent, so how much are they gonna pay? Twelve hundred dollars, because they have a, a, a two-family, uh, the same, the same building, just it's a little bit bigger, you'll lose money, so obviously, it's not gonna be two families. As far as the basement downstairs, we live in Lakewood, we, let's get realistic, a forty-foot basement is not gonna be rented, with the dimensions being outside, what am I, Oklahoma here, this is Lakewood. You got ten square feet, it's rented. Uh, you spoke to Robert Canaric about this, and he just keeps wanting going, he wants to go ahead with this, and it just struck me kinda funny that for a two-family house, which is not a duplex according to you, but you're getting a percentage, you have six parking spots. It's beyond my belief, because, you know, if you need a, a, a house, because you have a lot of kids, obviously, the kids aren't driving a car, so why need six spots for two families? I can see maybe four, but six spots, and you're telling me that they're not gonna rent it out, yashah, you're gonna have that when you rent it out. I mean, it's beyond logic to say that it's not gonna be rented out, and you made a very good point also, that we're gonna stop in the future, we're taking this two-family house, duplex, and making it condominium, and selling it off, and that's where his profit's gonna be, he sells one half, makes the money back, lets up, and then he's got the other half for regular income. That's the way it's gonna be, you know it, I know it, and you can use it yourself. So based on that, I would just like to say that I hope the board listens very carefully, from a financial point of view, from the point of views that you give folks, to write up, and reject this application.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me, raise your right hand, you'll start the vote. Full name, Spilelet.
Name, address, sir? Eight oh six, person nine. I wouldn't say I have nothing against Robert Canaric, I wish him all the best. I'd like to make a point, many times, of the day or night, we can't find time, and we're surrounded by two large dormitories, the Sheena camp, campus comprised of two large buildings, many dormers own cars, and many men drive through Sheena. The spots allowed for this multiple dwelling, in our dwelling, is simply not enough, nor in his one, the solution offered by Robert Canaric is not realistic and dangerous for many children. The owner, Robert Canaric, as of now, doesn't live here, has not built it, because he needs a larger house. The variances he requested will cost a nice sum, a logic dictates, it's not just in large, you can rent a dual apartments, but to accommodate more families. Furthermore, the requested variance will definitely have space for more basement apartments, and one is to prevent said owner, or whoever you may sell it to, from making, instead of two, making four or five, six apartments. I strongly urge the zoning board, in order to make a proper determination, but please spend time, and see for yourself what we're talking about, you can't imagine it unless you see it for yourself, as the area is very squishy and very congested. Approving these variances will hurt us in many ways, and definitely compromise a. Approving these variances will hurt us in many ways and definitely compromise a whole of your life. I hope your decisions are based on laws and common sense.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close to the public. Brian, you want to sum up? Or else I will, it's promotion. I do have a question, um, I do, I do have a question. I did hear what Mr. Lutz has said, and I did hear what, what Robert Queen under has said. Who are these partners working? Is he, I heard, I heard that he's not, doesn't live here. Is he moving in here? Um, um, it's a solid answer. What are we doing here? What's the, what's the, uh, the address of the area?
The applicant said they're gonna rent it herself.
He's not moving in?
He's not moving.
Okay.
Uh, so, so we, the first gentleman that got up said, we have too much parking, so we must be planning something else. Uh, the ordinance, the ordinance said we need eight, we chose six. We can do eight, we can do four. If the board thinks it's too much parking, tell us that, we'll take some of the parking away. Uh, we thought six was the right number, and eight's the right number. The second, the second gentleman that got up said, we didn't have enough parking. So, uh, if, if the board makes, the board makes the decision, we thought this was what was appropriate. Uh, the, the comment about the basement apartments, again, if we did our expansion as we did and had two, we can still have that long basement, and if we wanted to, we could rent it out to four basement apartments illegally. Uh, the same as board could be renting illegally if the board approved this from an applicant who came in and said, this is what I wanna do above.
So you are testifying now that you are not putting in any basement apartments?
P.
And you will not be a, a stairway based on the plans?
Basement.
From outside to the basement?
That-
Or, or from any exterior wall to the basement? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
So if it will end up being-
And that would be a condition of people-
So if it will be-
If the board acts vain.
If it will be a ba, a basement apartment, you will, it'll be an illegal basement apartment?
Correct.
And you will be violating the zoning ordinance, the zoning approval-
Not, not anybody who did that.
What?
Not me.
Why, I didn't do it.
Somebody did that.
Okay, let's take a time.
I wouldn't do it.
Um, 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 um.
Yeah, but you've got crawl space limits aside, we're trying to make limits for families.
You know, I would, I would say that crawl space, but maybe, um, not at a, at a basement ceiling, you know, uh, maybe seventy-five to seven or, 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 uh, whatever. But, but, um, you will not put a door, you can't build this house with a door, you're that, you see up.
Correct.
And you're not gonna come back later and say, whoops, we forgot, the builder didn't read the ledge, we put a door in, we wanna keep it. Perhaps you're gonna put a fortune, you didn't notice, it could go this way, went that way.
I can't, I can't bounce the mirror, she may-
What? Okay. 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 All right, I just, okay, wait. Okay, okay. Hold on, I, I have to get the other application.
The other argument brought up was my actual argument on it, but certainly making it nicer because it gives more money for-
I case the financial issues in time.
Right. And, and it's, you know, what, what type is, to accommodate families, three thousand square feet accommodates families. Two families, there are families that wanna live there.
Okay.
Those people, myself, I don't need it. Those people don't need three thousand square feet, but families do.
Okay. Um, having settled, can I have a motion?
So why did you ask for ten thousand square feet?
You were interpreting it based on the auto of the rules.
Mul, multi-family action. But is it, would be considered as a duplex, somebody had one of them?
Actually, it was-
Terry, you're not looking into the mic, I just got a complaint from Grandma. You're not, you're not-
With apologies to Grandma.
Yes.
The sugar.
Okay.
For a duplex, it would be ten thousand square feet.
So would generally spicy, you'd ten thousand square?
Our interpretation is we, we-
Whether it's a duplex or whether it's a-
Well, whether it's-
Multi-family, you, you're allowed fifteen units per area, so we have to back into that, seventy-five hundred square feet, it would be two units, which we're in.
Our interpretation of architecture, which as in our letters, very clear, we weren't sure of local building and I wanted them to explain it. Our interpretation of architecture was that it disappeared from the beginning.
Back to back to the back.
But now that you're in testimony, do you agree that they can put up that same size two-family apartment one atop another?
From a building coverage standpoint?
From a variance coverage, 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 can he get the same, the same, um, 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 sized units, one atop another, to go to frantic, frantic side? Or, or you're a dick? Okay.
I think the answer is yes.
Okay. So now it's just a matter of putting it somewhere. I got it.
No, I think, what you said, you said that if they want to build up the down, up the bottom-
Same size building, they have a pool already for it.
I don't believe it would be-
They do. It has frantic side.
We have to submit a building application.
Yes.
And if something is appropriate, because we're not exacerbating any of the, uh, existing whole-
Guys, whoever's gonna go back, if there's shoes outside, please leave, if there's shoes outside. Thank you.
So if you want to build what you happen to have, just extend the vertical dimensions, you're okay?
Yes.
And you don't necessarily have anything.
Correct.
You don't need something a little nicer, you wanna break back to back duplex, which is being ten thousand, if we get thirty-five hundred.
They pop this split into two floors. Let's hold on. Okay, can I have a vote? Can I, can I have a vote? I'm sorry, we closed to the public, I cannot, cannot, I ask anyone to come up anymore. We cannot, we cannot, uh, we're, we're up to some, I'm very sorry, but we're up to summation of the hearing that we heard, and you're just answering certain questions that we had. Because he's professional, he's professional in building, it was closed to the public, it's closed to the public. I'm sorry, I cannot have anyone come up again. Can I have a vote? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Can I have a second?
What's that?
Second. I have a second, computer, yeah. Can I have a second, Terry?
Mr. Gilly.
Remember, yes means no.
Mr. Gilly.
I think it's a difficult one. Because, bro.
Okay, come back to Mr. Gilly. Come back to the next one.
Mr. Havisham.
I can give my explanation to my denial.
No, no, no.
Do you want my explanation?
Yes.
Even though they can build a, a top and body, it still looks like a duplex, a front and back, and a front and back duplex can end up being a full family house in one. So, um, by right, you can build as big of a two-family house as you want.
You do it.
And let me do it. Go to family tomorrow and build it. But a front and back duplex is a precedent we have never done yet, that's illegal in Lakewood, and it'll end up being a full family house, so that's why I am saying to adjourn motions.
Mr. Havisham.
Yes.
Mr. Naftali.
Yes.
Mr., oh, Mr. Langley, yes. Mr. Rivia.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Halveston.
Does my vote count this time?
No.
No. So the behavior is no. Motion, motion denied.
No, the motion is true.
Uh, we mentioned, yes, denied. Okay, moving forward, we're gonna go into, um, we're gonna go to, we have a, we have a body, we have a six table.
Bill number four oh six eight, right about it. From Terry's phone engineer plan on March twenty-first, twenty eighteen, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval to include use and load barriers we need for a new four-story synagogue office building to be constructed. And the site plan indicates that the proposed building will have a six thousand four hundred eighty square foot footprint and a main sanctuary area of two thousand four hundred ninety-one square feet. The applicant proposes the first and second floor to be used as a synagogue, the third and fourth floors proposed would be utilized as office space. Okay?
This application is in hand, it shows you what it is. This is now a general presentation that's, see, it's about kids, last week.
Hold on, look, uh, woman, I know. Where, where?
Andrew. Andrew, two forty-five, four hundred, in the third floor.
Fine, before you can, I stepped out for a moment, but I wanted to declare the county here. Who's here for appeal number four zero seven three? Uh, David Bearbaum.
Sorry.
You are?
Yeah.
Good, so that's what I wanna do. I wanna make a motion to postpone four zero seven three to six eleven. We're not gonna get to it tonight.
Motion.
Motion from, um, Ms. Langley, second by Mr. Naftali, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Halveston.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Naftali. Mr. Rivia. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, this is without further notice on a waiver of pardon, whoever's here for appeal number four zero seven, David Bearbaum, it is postponed to six eleven due to the timeframe of the night's meeting. Okay. Um, Alexandra, Alexandra Hoffman. What?
If he wants to wait it out, is he here? Who's here?
I'm here.
Would you wanna wait it out?
Take a chance.
And take a chance? We might not get to it? It's up to you. Sit and wait, you decide to go home, you let me know, okay? Fine. Okay, go ahead.
Basically, this is a, this is a, this house is right now in Minyan, four stories. Minyan's an organization that works with the kids in the street, self-friendly. And we're looking to expand, right now building a four-story on the first floor, the sanctuary on the second floor, the game on the second floor, the kitchen and most on the second floor, even more room, you can be a fan, more of a business source that would not be for the kids. So, we're designing, it's only that, it's a little smaller footprint, almost existing, but it's gonna have, uh, a particular floor, it's gonna be, first floor, it's gonna be sanctuary instead of second floor, and the second floor, which is a split, uh, floor, part of it is in the offices and hanging areas, hard to be, the game area, if you look at the, 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 the,
That kind of stuff. Joe Bishop, KDA Engineering Services, Madison, New Jersey, professional engineer, professional lab.
Swear or affirm.
I do. So, it enters the site, it's an existing lot, 34,000, 180 square feet. It's going down to square foot zone, and front and down ocean half. About five lots east of the railroad, two lots west of Park Avenue. Existing buildings, back to the 50s, had a facelift or two since then, but has a substantial unsafe zone. Currently, there's not enough room for adequate access on the part of the site. For anyone who's familiar with it, any larger vehicles aren't going to back out onto maybe able to make a proper turn to move to get out. That, there's also a narrow aisle on the west side, which is accessed to the rear, where remained of the park was. Right now, the site is primarily fallen purpose, especially in front. It's paved straight from the fill all the way to the road, and the press car across the entire front, as I said, in unsafe condition. Located in the B4 zone, under the wholesale service zone. Existing buildings contain approximately 6,400 square feet of retail. The applicant indicated four stories. And the Minion is upstairs. Minion is indicated synagogue for challenging teams, providing inherently beneficial use of view, which currently has approximately 2,250 square feet sanctuary. Surrounding the area consists of a mix of commercial, residential, use, commercial use for start. Office directly to the west, more road parks to the east, rich town havens to the north of the site, further east to the old lumber bar, railroad, grain of oil, and shrines and mufflers across the street 98. Unique mix of uses, as I said, A B 4. Specifically between railroad tracks and Park Avenue, which provides more of an extension of the downtown than it is really a wholesale service area. Lumber yards, you know, it's covered. The uses throughout that area are really neat, and the zone requirements that was intended, when it was first established. So, the applicant proposes to remove all existing structures, construct a new, more modern Minion block, with office spaces above. Four stories. The Minion will take up the lower two stories as indicated, and will have a sanctuary of 2,491 square feet. So, it is modestly increased from existing.
400?
2,491.
I see on your file, you have a first-story sanctuary area, 2,288. On your, on your parking calculations.
Correct, 2,288 is the total. My apologies, that is correct. 2,288 sanctuary area. Which requires parking needs in the parking stalls. The offices will count for.
Hold on, one more second. Again, I'm looking at your, at your variance map.
Yes.
Usable sanctuary rate, 1,941.
Correct, so, in a review by Terry's office, he had indicated that we should utilize the higher sanctuary, not the usable space. So, we recalculated the numbers accordingly, and account for the growth of the sanctuary versus removing the areas that's been up, area code as you say, which accounted for about 500 square feet of, of the dump.
We'll talk about it later, okay?
The offices total across 11,128 square feet, for a total of 44.5 parking stalls. So, that's a total, including the entirety of the sanctuary, of approximately 63 parking stalls. We are proposing 51 parking stalls. Our traffic expert will provide testimony as to the offsetting piece, and the benefits of that, and how the parking that they are providing is substantially sufficient for the site. The proposed layout will also eliminate that unsafe access currently off of 1,888. We're going to provide a fully channelized access, with access to the rear. There is a second floor overhang, over a small portion of the parking area. That will be approximately 14-foot clear, so it will be sufficient enough for any small trucks or emergency vehicles to access to the rear. This is a redevelopment of an existing non-keel structure, with a desirable building and inherently beneficial use. It's a substantial benefit to the general welfare of the community. Synagogues and alternates are permitted use in the zone. We are requesting a side guard setback area for five feet for 10 feet required, although I'll note that discrepancy orders, specifically the zoning schedule indicates that a zero setback is permitted where business, use against business, similarly to B2.
So, he is zero a lot line, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying the order mentions discrepancy. One part says 10 feet required, one part says zero.
Okay, so I'll talk about it right there.
Are you referring to the checklist, actually, with you?
Correct.
All right. My experience, or my experience, is that checklist has not been updated in years, so if there is a discrepancy, we tend to not use that.
So, so for zero, is it ten?
Ten.
And we've noticed for ten, our application indicates a ten required. I will note, the existing building is three feet over the property line. It's negative weight. We are actually moving the building eight feet.
You're giving me five feet.
He's giving me three feet plus five. Giving it a total of eight.
Well, I'll give you a landlord.
It's true.
Give me five.
Correct.
I think I have a thing.
So, we are, we're moving further over from property line to currently exist.
Wow, five feet.
As noted before, this area of downtown, between railroad and Park Avenue specifically, is certainly more commensurate with the downtown area. I do have probably a zoning map here, which shows the B2 zone, downtown area, involves the small B2 to the east. Here's the railroad. The grain here denotes the site question. So, the setback area is mainly ran behind the C2 criteria, that the benefits the application have, that we're actually moving the building eight feet further west, waiting adjacent lot, as a net benefit to the neighborhood and to the planning, by providing a five-foot setback for zero, as I said, in 1,938. The reason we're here before you, and the planning orders, we are requesting a height variance. Height variance is required for 64 feet, for 45 that permitted in the B4 zone. The B2 zone to our west, and the RN zone to our east, both allow for 65-foot height. RN zone is a multi-family situation, B2 is permitted, you know, as a right, at 65-foot height. Referring back to that B4 criteria, specifically, looking at the master plan, 2017 master plan, identifies that the B4 is intended for storage yards for lumber, coal, grain and feed, wholesale and warehousing facilities, doing your car lot, processing for baking, laundry, upholstery, grain and feed. You can see these uses are a little outdated.
Too great.
Possibly. But, over time, this area has kind of taken on the field and uses typical to the B2 zone. It's the downtown east area. For that reason, I believe it's appropriate that a taller height that is permitted under the zone, the regular portion of the west, is added. Specifically under MOLU, height of principal structure is not included, see by 10 feet or 10 percent, the maximum height permitted in the district, the principal structure required relief under section D6. So, it is a use variance, for the height in this case, which is why we're here. Use variance can be granted by the applicant to demonstrate that the use is inherently beneficial, which we have here, as well as special reasons to justify the relief we're being, were requesting. And it can also be granted without substantial protection of the public good, or to his own plan and his own orders. Special reason of rooter in the purposes of the plan, under section 2 of the MOLU, promotion of general welfare, a special reason A, a special reason for most embodies this type of application, specifically, the use promotes the general welfare because of the proposed site is particularly suited for the use, or in this case, the height. Particular suitability, they have seen a special reason where two criteria met, within a need, where the use fulfill the need of the general community, as identified. The union certainly serves a particular need of the community, it provides the benefit of a synagogue area, but obviously, a synagogue has a primary purpose of helping the youth. And when the property itself is particularly well-fitted for the use in terms of location, the property or shape, in this case, location. Proposed height is particularly suited to this area, extremely close to B2 zone. It's in very close proximity to other 65-foot buildings, 65-foot heights, high buildings that exist, particularly building in Fort Princeton, the Rocky Building, go that Second Street, the apartment adjacent to that, across the bus station, as well as the lake housing authority to our east.
How tall is it?
I did not take a measurement of each, but all of them are five stories or more.
I have another one, second to Madison.
Grounding on that one.
Oh, all right.
There are more.
I was sorry, I didn't find a place to go. You know, Ella LeBovis is also.
That's true. But neither of all the vicinity in this particular building. Go through, specifically, you have to fill in a form for our quarters. We have the closing.
You don't know how tall it is, but it's.
That's a five-story building?
The five-story. There's a park, two parks.
That's a, that's a office.
Where?
Officer.
What's the model?
What's the model?
Oh, okay.
Model.
That's always one, that's five-story. Typically, how, how big is the story?
Typically, the office building is probably going to save 12, 14-foot height by the time they have the spans, and the joists, and the caters and all that.
And on the ground floor.
That's a B2 zone.
Space of the.
Ground floor, that is, yes, B4.
No, that's a B2 zone. That's a B2 zone.
The building on Second Street, which is probably the most recently built, five-story building, right behind that is the apartment complex that has ground floor parking, and I believe that's five stories of both apartments above that. And yeah, lake housing authority.
Five?
Five. And yeah, lake housing authority to the east, leading six stories. So, under the NCT standards, use variance can be granted, provided the applicant that demonstrates that it is inherently beneficial, a special reason to do it. In this particular case, the inclusion of the office makes the continued operation viable, there from showing the inherently beneficial use of the city. The height is really a function of that expanded to a second floor rate due to the sanctuary, which is said, there is a taller ceiling on the floors intentionally influenced the design. All other aspects of the application are fully informed. Additional special reasons exist, or justified grant of variance, specifically purpose B, provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for variety of outdoor residential recreation, market, and industrial use. This provides an appropriate location for offices and the synagogue, utilizing height and appropriate location to maximize space and improve that beneficial downtown area. In addition, we promote purpose I, promote a desired requirement to create development techniques and good civic design. We have an artist rendering of what the building looks like, certainly substantial improvement of the building that exists there, and will help revitalize this portion of the lake with the gateway coming in today into the center of town, and provide a benefit to the community. We're viewing those possible protections to the public good, reduction in air by building space. Again, the footprint size here remains approximately the same, or is actually a little smaller. Building height is measured with the downtown, we are further from the site setback than currently exists, and we utilize and elevate the second story to allow for parking and access to the ground level, trying to maximize as much access and parking as we possibly provide. And, very important, we can provide a much more adequate access from the state highway, compliant with the state rule. The second quarter of the criteria is, you don't compare the intended purpose to his own plan and his own orders. This is measured to the approved use of the zone, again, these two uses are permitted, reduce our zoning out of form where available, and the commercial uses in character of the area. So, based upon that, I believe the four test, sufficient reasons to justify the grant of the variance, respectively requested use of. We also have our traffic engineer provide testimony on the parking and traffic.
Okay. Before we get to the parking check, I want to get some credit on the parking spaces.
Yes.
And then we're going to tackle behind it. Okay. And I'm going to address my comments to Terry, and to you as well, okay? I see over here a population of parking with a, remove all the permanent fixtures to the, to the main sanctuary, which the bookcases, the stage, the main arm, the holy arm, and the B1. My question is, let's, let's use the bookcase, is that part of the wall fixture?
Yeah, certainly, it's built into the wall. To the wall, yes. So, that could likely be removed?
Likely removed, or it's not going to be removed, because anyone.
The numbers I just provided, the testimony I gave you, is worst case, somebody sitting in the bookcase, it's using.
But I understand that, but, but, but a synagogue, since I'm a person, I don't basically mind my own personal book. Any synagogue on the bookcases, regardless. So, therefore, I don't know, who would be considered part of the wall of the, of the synagogue, wouldn't it?
I, I'm partly an expert on sanctuaries. I serious as directed here, I represent the law, as well as the sanctuary.
So, if you combine, if you combine a bookcase on the wall, right, taking that 12, 13 inches, which is firmly built into the wall, all around the wall, I can consider it as unusable space?
It may be unusable, but your parking definition is based on the sanctuary space.
It doesn't define what that means.
It defines usable versus nonusable.
But it's not, okay, but it's not, it's not, it's not part of the bookcase. I, I understand that, but I'm trying to come to a logistic understanding, a logical thing, that they shouldn't require a little parking space. Hey, if it's out to us, you can fit a lot of people.
The problem that our grantee is, you're going to provide your testimony, your demonstration, your empty margins, given that this is crossing each.
Because, okay, fine, but if, if this is an issue, then yes, we have a problem. You know, let's try to be able to, when it stays the same, you can put your, not the same.
Correct.
If it's B1, you put status in chat as B1, that's what I'm getting at here. You know, but.
Exactly, which one of the testimonies you're going to report to?
Okay. Okay, so, I'll wait for your testimony from the traffic there, and then we'll tackle behind it, okay?
Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonough and Ray Associates. Provide testimony on the traffic report, traffic report that was submitted on March 23rd. Yes, we did that. There's a traffic report submitted that in March 23, 2018. And the first thing I'll touch on is, again, this is a redevelopment site, and we did a traffic generation analysis comparing the current uses, which have retail, which are higher traffic generator than office, as compared to the new development, and the traffic generation is comparable between current use and the proposed development. We also did a level service analysis, and again, as Joe discussed, the access improvements along 1,888 is superior to what exists there today, where we're creating a two-way, I'll say a legal two-way driveway that has a driveway throat, there's no parking maneuvers to and from 1,888. And projected to operate a level service C during the morning and afternoon peak hours for traffic activity, and for left turns in at a level service A. As it deals with the site plan and parking, as we discussed, it's a mixed use development, in where the office use has its peak parking demand late morning into late, late afternoon, where the synagogue's peak parking activity is early morning and late afternoon. So, given the fact that we don't have both uses happening with that on peak parking needs, it's my opinion that the 51 parking spaces proposed here are adequate to support use. The other aspect of it is, the number of employees or tenants within the office space would also be utilized in synagogue too, so you have to share the internal trip order to better solidify the parking supply being proposed. And just, I guess, another point to be made as far as the synagogue use, there are a number of clients that live in the area that can walk to the site, and there's a number of the young adults that'll be at the synagogue that'll be also driven or parked, so again, this is a unique situation with the type of synagogue, and the fact that you have two different uses that you do not have with no peak parking period. I'll end on this. With all the all offers, again, as in summary, of the traffic generation from the proposed development, we're hoping to do one of the tests there today. The access improves for the park security for what exists today, and it'll be set by NJ DOT, and they'll operate a local service C, and as far as the parking, as I called it, the two uses do not have with that on the peak, parking demand periods, the 51 parking spaces will be adequate for the production.
How many parking spaces are we short on the, on the, on the plan?
We're short based on, as I recall, Terry's report, 63.
Please survive.
65, so we're short 14 spaces.
Okay. I just got a people looking at the map. Is there probably a parking lot right behind the building, on the corner of Tracks Railroad and, and East Port Street?
Right.
How far is that from the, from the site?
That's not public.
There is a public parking up there. Why? It's on this side, oh no, that's, that's the next parking lot.
No.
No, no, no. There is, there was a public parking lot across the intersection, like they had a street, it was right near the corner on the east side of the track, the base of the track. Um, there is a parking lot on the, of the southwest corner of East Port Street.
And that has to be the right word, Joe, for sure, but it's...
Yeah, it's right about where I'm indicating, it's E to the track, uh, southwest corner goes to the intersection with the track.
Is it the port street?
Yes.
And that's driving, yes.
That's driving.
That's, that's driving, that's driving. Yes, it's the right, it's the right.
If you're looking for more parking for the peak time, which is like burn, maybe a Hanukkah party or a barbecue or something at night, we have a few neighbors that park there without problems. It's maybe five, six times a year that I've done here, fish above, above burn, Hanukkah.
Okay.
Otherwise, you don't have, you don't have a parking lot.
So during the day from, from Miami, from, uh, Kennel, during the day you never kind of utilize that whole parking lot?
No, and in fact, right now, about, uh, in the back, you can park approximately thirty cars, and about ten of those spots are used up by the building next door, the seminar that's there.
Right, right now, how many do you have? Do you have about thirty cars?
About thirty cars parked here.
And you never use them?
You never use them.
And how many of your kids have come in over there? Are they driving lanes?
They, they, they drive with the number of...
So the E can handle, it's one of the cars, it's a car, so fifty-one space and it's not up. I'll get a show on the car. Okay, would you come on skateboard, so what is this, fold if you, um, I would come on a hoverboard? Why not just, what is life? Or the high? Or the high? Okay, fine, um, then, any questions on the parking, before we go to the next step?
Uh, just a quick question, uh, okay, is this going to be any variable to this building, or is it pulled mainly actual on the building?
Two, the top two floors are going to be taxable, so it will be all my money, the value of the navitax, and the top two.
The land's going to be all my money?
And then the...
So the top floors are legit straight up, oh, let's say.
And then if the way that's seen, it's plenty of, I don't know that now, it's...
Okay, okay, so you're just talking on the two floors. Now, you have about twelve thousand square feet on those two, all those floors, right?
Twelve.
Take it to eleven.
Eleven, five, whatever, fifteen, eleven, five, eleven, and, and your calculation, how much parking space is here, about forty-something, forty-one, forty-two? Just for those two spaces, just for those two floors.
Forty-four and a half for those, eleven thousand one hundred square feet.
Do you repeat that?
Forty-four and a half for the eleven thousand one, uh, one hundred square.
I mean, about forty-four and a half.
We require forty-four, we have fifty-one stalls.
Okay, so that means that the synagogue is only going to have the two floors of synagogue, or floor and a half of synagogue, only have eleven spaces?
Hold.
Uh, it'll have six spaces, six spaces extra, um, during the middle of the day, we'll have a stroll.
So if, the synagogue's not going to be used during the day, you know, if you have business in there, you're going to run short on parking. You know, if you can have any kind of service there or any kind of activities during their business hours, Monday through Friday, it's going to be short on parking.
It's not going to, not going to be used.
And you can have a big beautiful building, you're not going to use it during the day?
Not going to happen. They, they, they're not using during the day.
No, beautiful building like this, they got to use it. I don't know.
Not making, not making, not making, not making use of the car.
You have no, there's no care facilities.
Guys, 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 please, please, guys.
There's no kitchen, there's no, there's too much, I mean...
I'm not worried about small kitchen. Uh, you have party rooms for the boys, where, where the boys party?
I do, we do use the...
Okay, and, um, okay, so your testimony is that, uh, the, the three, two floors, you, you, more than the less intense spaces, more than adequate?
It's like, you know, time when the night is, since it's night party, you utilize all the office spaces.
That's the, that's the day.
During, yeah.
You do have mentors there, come, right, go to my driver's.
You're wearing the...
That's right, so the during the day, based on what you're saying, you, this office building during the day, you think it's being set for, being, it's, 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 most kids would not drive, please.
Right, there's, there's a lot of housing in that area, there's a lot of housing in that area now, a big beautiful, uh, sanctuary like that, they're going to come with air conditioning and free food and coffee. I suspect a lot, you know, during the day, you'll have a lot of...
You're going to make some money.
Yeah, but compared to building, you know, it looks scary to walk into that building now. That's before the...
Kids will make a scary noise.
Okay, let, let, I have a little, I have a little...
Can you get, uh, back in the phone or something?
Let's ask him, because that's a little, a little...
During the day, during the day, I don't have worry about it, offices are gone, I'm working on the, like, during the day. How are you going to, how are you going to satisfy a, a day traffic?
Much property left is left, what I do, not, say, much, much property, that is, that it could be a beautiful building and, uh, trust me, you're a guy, there's, uh, people that are going to come in.
You're not going to, you're not going to stop them.
That's how I think, those, those, public, uh, stop, yeah. Okay, no, no, come on, okay, um, let's talk about the height now, what do you do with the height? Here's the problem.
I don't know height.
You don't know height, you're doing, okay, I was going to say seventy-four. What? Okay, if, if this, to hear my, uh, straight-up question, okay, I understand why you have sixty-four foot building, and I look at the plan, it, it, it's really a beautiful set of architecturals, which, which will want the kids to stay within the building, just to play it simple, it's a new place, there's a lot of open area, open space, they don't feel claustrophobic, they want to get out. Want to inside do all their, uh, game room smoking, uh, sorry, eating, buying, uh, eating the building, right? By, I understand why you got sixty-four feet, to give it that open, open great look, right? So there's a reason why we should approve it, right? So arguably, if this board does approve it, why don't you say to the neighbors, why, and we don't have questions after the block, that only you and no one else?
Respect.
Respect.
Special.
Oh, he's special.
Who's true.
Oh.
There are others in surrounding neighborhoods, there are other full buildings, those are the reasons, this should be expected, most communities would generally, the barriers, uh, be...
Yeah, I, I agree, but then, like you said, you come with...
And if you did, like I said, we do have a substantially larger lot that's permitted in the zone, and actually, one of the largest lots in this area of B two zone. Uh, the ordinance was, uh, recently amended to require parking for, in B two zone, parking from the upper floors, but we don't have that property, we are providing ample parking, uh, to justify this building, whereas, uh, the other properties in this area, would have difficulty providing their, their parking needs while also in height. We do have a unique location here, a newly sized lot, uh, to allow for, for this particular property, whereas others might have a difficulty making that same margin.
Right down the road, right down the road, as it all stand alone.
Well, there is no precedent in the town for seventy-five, sixty-five is permitted...